Good evening and welcome to tonight's school committee meeting of March first, 2023. My name is Lindsay Heffernan. I am the chair of the committee. I'd like to start our meeting as I always do, thanking members of Shrewsbury Media Connection, and particularly Liz Poploski, who's with us this evening for both recording and live broadcasting this event. This meeting will be rebroadcast on channel 29 between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting, and also available on the SMC YouTube channel. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Nobody has asked to address the committee this evening, but should anybody like to in the future, they can let the chair know in advance and could be recognized for up to three minutes to present any material. And of course, the committee will review any emails or other materials received before or after any meetings. Our next item on our agenda are chairperson and members reports. Colleagues, anything to report this evening? No, we will move right along then to our superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you very much. I do want to let the community know that earlier today in Boston, the Massachusetts School Building Authority did vote to approve the window replacement project for the Oak Middle School that had been submitted some time ago. I want to thank Keith Baldinger, the assistant director of the Department of Public Works, for his outstanding work to start to move this forward. The project now will come into Shrewsbury in terms of looking at what's possible relative to supplies and, you know, timing. Right now, as everyone knows, there's been a significant delay in a variety of construction pieces. So I know Mr. Baldinger will update, and there'll be need to be some action at the upcoming eight-town meeting. But we appreciate MSPA's continued support. This is through their program. They've paused going forward right now because of funding, but we were already in the pipeline for this, what's known as a repair project. So that's a new window project for Oak Middle School. I also want to invite those who are watching to look for on our website tomorrow. We'll be posting it. I did send by email to everyone who's on our listserv, our families and staff and community members as part of the strategic planning process that we're going through. We have launched a thought exchange. We've used this tool at different times over the past few years. We're essentially looking for feedback on what people value about our schools now that people would like to see preserved, and what is it in the next five years as we think about our goals and strategic priorities, what are we looking for to best support our students in the future? Based on challenges or opportunities people perceive our students are going to need to be thinking about in their futures. So we invite people to participate. We typically have very robust participation. We'll look forward to that. Our consultants from Focus Schools will be reviewing all of that data, as will our leadership team, and we'll certainly bring that to the school committee as part of the ongoing reports leading up to a new strategic plan that we hope to have finalized by the spring. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Sawyer. Our first time scheduled appointment is Student Spotlight, a celebration of learning. I'm happy to welcome some of our staff who are here, and I understand some young people. So for some background here, our family consumer science, music, PE, and visual arts department at Shrewsbury High School provide opportunities for students to access the curriculum in least restrictive and inclusive environments, and I understand these classes are called foundation courses. Maybe, Dr. Sawyer, I'll turn it over to you to help set the stage here for this great group of people who are joining us this evening. Thanks for being here.
Sure. It looks like we just lost our slides. I don't know. Is that whose laptop?
It's my laptop.
Is that your laptop? Okay, so just gonna bring those slides back.
I get in before, but now I need a password.
Mr. LaRue will help you.
Oh, we have the best support available.
Thank you.
Straight to the top, Director of IT. But while we're getting that set up, I want to thank Dr. Lizzard for organizing this and introduced you. They'll introduce themselves, but Ms. Pamela Blank, who is the Director of Visual Arts and teaches the Foundations of Art course, Shirley Lemay, who's a Family Consumer Sciences teacher who's teaching the Foundations of Cooking, and three of our students from the class of 2023, Camden Chenover, also from the class of 23, Drew Conan, and from the class of 25, Emily Nelson. And we're very pleased to have these faculty and students here to tell us a little bit about what foundations courses are, what we've been doing. It's something that we're really proud of and looking forward to hearing what they're going to share. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Blank.
Yes, thank you. Want to say good evening to them? Want to say good evening? Yeah, okay. So, thank you. We're happy to be here to share with you a little bit about our classes. As Dr. Sawyer mentioned, so we have these four classes that are all foundations of art, or cooking, music, and phys ed. And we want to take this opportunity to share and highlight some of the amazing work that our students do. For several years now, the Family Consumer Science, Music, Physical Education, and Visual Arts have had the opportunity at SHS to provide multiple learning experiences and opportunities for our students to access the curriculum in a least restrictive and inclusive setting. The foundation courses provide a collaborative opportunity for peer mentors in a leadership role and work alongside with students with disabilities. Students currently meet twice a week with all these classes. With the exception of PE, they meet three times a week in the rotating schedule. During their time in these classes, students explore basic concepts of art, cooking, music, and physical education, and apply skills in various exhibits, performances, and movement experiences. So here are some images of our students in the various courses that they take part in. You can see them cooking. Cam, can you find yourself in any of those up there? Not yet?
Cam's out there, but...
Yeah, I see you up there in the back, right? Emily, you're in there cooking? So this is just all about our courses that I just described to you. But I think what you'll find is hearing from the students themselves, their experiences of being in these courses with the students. I think you'll hear over and over the relationship building, how important that is. So we're gonna play a little video and then allow some time for Drew. You want to play the video?
No.
Okay.
This class is a great opportunity for the kids to experience a different environment and learn how to use different tools that they might not know how to use in the kitchen, and learn how to wash dishes and clean up after themselves. One of my favorite things is cooking. I love cooking and baking, and I love being able to share my enjoyment of that with these students and helping them learn how to cook and bake and giving them these recipes to be able to use at home or just anywhere outside of school.
There was always a really good energy in the classroom. We'd come in, we were all excited to get cooking. We'd be singing, we'd be dancing, we'd be making new foods together. We got to build relationships that we may not have gotten if we didn't take this class.
I feel like we were really lucky to have this opportunity that a lot of other students don't, to like make new friends. What I enjoyed most about this class is that normally, like, I didn't know as much of cooking myself, so like having like other students like along with me that also didn't know a lot too, like also helped me learn. I think I taught them a lot, and they also taught me a lot.
I thought this class was an amazing opportunity for us and all of the students together. We all learned so much from each other and built great relationships. I feel like it was also a great opportunity to be able to take leadership and have kind of like act like teachers and have them teach us so much and us teach all the other students so much. And just kind of like we all always bounced ideas off of each other and all collaborated so well and worked so well together. It was a really great opportunity that we had.
My favorite part of this class was just no matter how bad the day you were having, you always leave this class with a big smile and you create such great relationships with the other students. And as you're walking in the hall, you can always rely on all of the other students to say hi to you. And I just think it makes everyone so feel so accomplished and so great about themselves.
Thank you. And so I just want to pass it over to Drew and see if Drew can share his thoughts.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Drew Conan, and I am a current senior at Shrewsbury High School. Before I begin, I'd like to thank Ms. Lemay for inviting me to speak at this event and thank everyone else for being here. Last semester, I had the opportunity to take the Foundations of Cooking class, which, by the way, is my favorite class I've ever taken at the high school. And today, I'd like to talk to you guys about how incredible our school's foundations programs are. So the high school offers an array of courses in the foundations program that create unique opportunities for both regular and special education students to come together and work together. These courses come with a laundry list of benefits, and I think they are very important to acknowledge. For regular education students, it provides a chance to develop skills such as learning how to work with students with different needs and abilities. It also provides you with some real-world skills like patience, empathy, and communication. On the other hand, for special education students, this course provides an inclusive learning opportunity where everybody can learn together with their peers and learn by like doing it with their hands, just real-world experience. These courses serve as a catalyst for creating strong relationships and between all different students in addition to also building on lifelong skills. With all that being said, it's in my personal opinion that the best benefits from these courses are seen beyond the classroom. From greeting my new friends in the halls to sitting with them at lunch, it's just great to see what these classes can do. It's just awesome to me that my cooking class is able to align me with a whole new group of friends that I otherwise wouldn't have met, and I think that's what's so different and unique about these courses. As a student who has taken a foundations course, I can say firsthand that it was a positive and rewarding experience. Whether we're making some really good cinnamon rolls or some really good hot dogs, everyone was always smiling, always having a good time, but most importantly, we were all learning, whether we knew it or not. I believe these foundations courses are an important part of our school's commitment to inclusion and are exceptionally beneficial to every single person in those classrooms. I have learned way more from our special education students than I could have ever taught, and I'm so incredibly grateful for that opportunity. With all of these great benefits that I've mentioned and the ones I didn't quite get to, it's obvious that these courses contribute positively to our school's culture and are a great reflection of who we strive to be as a community. Thank you all very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Drew, very much.
Thank you very much. At this moment, we're gonna show some slides with Camden. And Cam, do you want to say how you feel about being in the class? Can you play that?
I feel happy. I can see my friends.
Did you get to hear that?
I feel happy. I can see my friends.
See yourself up there with Mrs. Lemay enjoying some of that food right after cooking?
All the spaghetti pictures out up there?
And actually, Cam, last year had his piece at the Worcester Art Museum, so that was one of the trips that we took, and Cam with his artwork at Youth Art Month. And then Emily, would you like to share?
Yeah, this is me and my friend Issa. We're making cookies. My favorite part is something new with my friends.
Thanks.
Excellent. And at this time, Mrs. Lemay is gonna share a little bit about her vision for this Thanksgiving feast that she hosted this year.
Okay. Thank you so much for having us and hearing about this great program. This Thanksgiving feast we had was more about the celebration of these programs coming together rather than just the food itself. It gave us a chance to kind of spotlight the cooking, music, art, and PE programs. It was just so nice. The cooking portion that we did, we had a chance to plan a menu. We researched some recipes. We made shopping lists. And then we prepared all the food, and we had a beautiful feast for the students. And then the students provided a nice dessert for our guests. So we had a nice showing. We had a lot of people come. Mrs. Lemay made these beautiful invitations. This is made out of the students' artwork. So she was able to use some of their leaf printing to make the invitations for our guests. And they came and they enjoyed the dessert that our students made together for them. And you can see in the pictures on the slides, we had a really nice feast. So cooking was certainly spotlighted right there in person, but Mrs. Lemay was able to bring some of their art projects, and you can see those in the slides as well. They had some pottery pieces that were on the tables, and then some of their other artwork were up on easels around the room. So it was such a thrill for the kids to see the guests admiring their work as they walked through and enjoyed the dessert. It was a little more difficult for music and PE to be spotlighted that day because, you know, dragging the drums down to the cooking room wouldn't really be all that convenient. So they made a nice video that was embedded into a slideshow that we had running throughout the feast. And the same with PE. So some of their physical activity was recorded and embedded into our slideshow so the people in attendance could see what they were doing in cooking, what they were doing in art, and then with the video saw some of the music and the PE activities. So that slideshow that we played is here on this page. And then we had a reporter come from the Community Advocate. She came on Friday, which was the day that we were, we had the feast on Monday, so previous Friday, the reporter came and saw the kids working together in preparation for the feast as they were making the desserts. And she asked some questions, spoke to the students, and did a nice article about it. So this really was just a day of celebration. It was just a way of bringing these four disciplines together and kind of showing off a little bit about how much fun they had and how much they learned and the camaraderie that was developed between our kids. It was just great. So something we won't soon forget. So thank you for, thank you for having us.
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to thank some of our supporting staff that I know couldn't be here tonight, but definitely was a collaborative effort of getting information and sharing the celebration. So we do want to offer a few minutes of your students.
Awesome. Thank you. I first just need to thank the students for being here tonight. It's not easy to talk and be in front of a lot of people, but we are really excited to know more about this program. And there's no one better to tell us what's happening at the high school than the kids who are at the high school. So for all parts of it, right? So, so thank you. Let me turn, my colleagues, any questions, please?
Just thank you for coming, especially to the students. Like Ms. Heffernan said, it's not always easy to speak. For me as a parent and a longtime school committee member, these are the much more gratifying things that we do versus a lot of the other that we worry about. This is, this is what we're here to do. And the comment about building relationships in the video, that's what it's all about. So thank you.
Thank you.
Please. Just also want to thank you. This is a wonderful presentation. So lovely to see all of you and to hear from you directly. Just had a question about how you, Drew, came to become involved in this? Is it a course that you just signed up for, or did you have to apply, or just kind of, could you tell us how that, how it works?
Yeah, sure. So since my sophomore year and on, I've always been involved with our school's unified program, which is basketball and track. It's like the same thing, but sport beast. And then I heard about this class from Ms. Lemay, and I was like, I gotta be in there. So I signed up for the course. I got it. And fortunately, it was only a semester long, so I wish I was still in there. But yeah, that's how I kind of got into it.
And one, one question. How many, across the four disciplines, how many young people are engaged? You know, we have a couple of courses every semester. Obviously, food seems to be done. That was, that was a fall. Maybe you can give us a sense of what that offering is like?
For the art department, and I can speak on behalf of the music, it's growing, let's say that. I do have the students both semesters. This semester, it's every day, whereas last semester, it was just too out of the cycle. And when I say it's growing, it's just because I don't know that our students understand the program as much. And there's a lot of safety that goes into the cooking, and a lot of times, those hands are really needed. So we have worked even this year, well, for the new program of studies, to revamp the way that the Foundations of Art is written and what we're doing for coursework so that more students are signing up. So I did take a sneak peek, and we already look like we have about seven or eight students signed up for next year, so that's really exciting. But it's not as full with peers the way that cooking is, but it is growing.
Great. Awesome. Well, Dr. Sawyer, I was certainly turning over you, but I want to just again thank the students for being here tonight, Camden, Drew, and Emily. It's really an honor to have you join us and tell us about what's, what's happening in our buildings. Dr. Sawyer.
Yeah, I mean, we're so proud of Emily and Cam and Drew and all their fellow students who are part of this. And I think that, you know, however our students are communicating with one another, it's just absolutely exactly what we set out to do five years ago with the strategic plan that we're just sort of wrapping up, was to, you know, build more inclusive opportunities for kids. And so I'm really pleased that, you know, as seniors, Cam and Drew kind of came on into the high school and were starting to build these unified programs, and United Sound last year as well that got off the ground that I want to mention, the Unified Sports, and now these foundations classes. It's just built now into the fabric of what we're doing. And, you know, one thing that I certainly notice and that I know that I'm proud of is that, as Drew sort of referenced, when you're at the high school and you're visiting, whether it's at lunchtime in the cafeteria, in the hallways, in classrooms, whatever it might be, you know, these students know one another, they appreciate one another. And I know that many of us may have, you know, gone to school at a time when, when that was not the reality. And that, that's a big improvement we made in our society. It's certainly an improvement that we continue to try to build on in our schools, and I think that's a, it's just a good thing for our community. And we're really, we will certainly miss Drew and Cam when they move on, but Emily, we've got for a couple more years, which is great. But I'm glad to hear from Ms. Lemay that the things are building as far as student interest. And I think that the more people know about this, the more interested it's going to be. So thank you for all the hard work on the part of the faculty and support staff who work with our students. And again, really appreciate you presenting this evening and sharing with the community the great work that you're doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you for having us.
It was our pleasure.
Excellent. Excellent. We'll have you back anytime. The next item on our agenda is our Student Advisory Committee report, also from our SHS students. So you can come on, come on up if you don't mind. Under the Massachusetts Education Reform Act, districts are required to have a student advisory committee consisting of five high school students who are elected by the student body. And the SAC is required to meet with the school committee during the year to review various issues of concern of the student body or the things that have been happening here. I want to just note, Mr. Andrew Smith, our advisor, is also always here and supportive, and so we thank you for, for that. And we have, we have four of, four of our five here tonight. So why don't I turn it over to you to get us, get us started?
So hello, my name is Laura Lee. I am a senior, and I am a member of the Student Advisory Committee. Unfortunately, Shalini is not able to attend this evening. Thank you so much for having us here today to share our agenda. My fellow members will now go down the line and introduce themselves.
My name is Siri, and I am a junior.
My name's Anya, and I'm also a junior.
I'm Nicole, and I'm a senior.
Student life. With the school year nearly three quarters complete, students are preparing for what's next to come.
As we enter the third month of 2023, thoughts about college are not only floating around the senior class, but around the juniors as well. From meetings with counselors to course selection, there are mixed feelings of apprehension and excitement in the air. Like many others, I am more than a little nervous for the year ahead, but I'm grateful for the faculty's continued guidance.
It's hard to believe it's already March with the school year flying by, but this month looks to be a busy time for me with the SATs and spring sports tryouts approaching. Regardless, I'm looking forward to participating in all the fun events the school has planned, such as Coffee House and Prom.
After our well-needed break, I'm ready to tackle this last stretch of high school. I'm excited for events like our 50-day senior breakfast, which is just around the corner. And with the conclusion of the winter sports season, my schedule has now freed up significantly, giving me more time to spend with my friends before we go our separate ways.
This month has been well anticipated by myself and many other seniors as most colleges will be releasing their regular decision, admission decisions. My AP classes are also starting to wrap up as we begin to prepare for finals in April and AP exams in May. It's both sad and exciting to know that I'll be graduating in three months, but I'm determined to continue working hard and make the most out of my time at SHS.
Job/career fair. On February 7th, Shrewsbury High School held a job/career fair showcasing 37 businesses during fourth period. Various jobs such as Worcester Red Sox, Selco, Detect Together, and Nyla Laboratories were all present. Students walked around and not only had the opportunity to investigate new fields, but also ask, speak to individuals that pursue them. Overall, the event was a major success with over 200 students in attendance.
School start time. With the recent decision to push school start times back by 20 minutes, many students have been expressing various opinions on the matter. Some have been awaiting this change for a while and are glad to get some more sleep before the school day. Others are skeptical of how effective a 20-minute delay will be and are also worried about arranging their activities after school. Most students are fairly neutral and are open to trying out this new start time.
Capstone. In the second week of January, students accepted to the Capstone course presented topics that have been more than a year in the making. From a website on simplifying the stock market to an application that tracks your finances, every single student went above and beyond to explore areas of interest. And now, we welcome the new wave of participants from the class of 2024 as they begin their own capstone journeys.
Co-curriculars. SHS students have had a great time getting involved with co-curriculars outside of school. Sports. SHS athletes continue to excel in meets and represent the Shrewsbury pride. Congratulations to the girls' swim team on a second-place finish at the league meet and to the boys' track team for bringing home the championship. Additionally, congratulations to the SHS girls' hockey team for winning their league championship. Good luck to our winter sports teams in their playoffs. Now, students look forward to spring sports trials.
Speech and debate. We may only be three months into this year, but the Shrewsbury Speech and Debate Team is already making history. Bringing home a first-place sweepstakes trophy, the team qualified 29 students to the NCAA tournament in Kentucky as well as 11 students to the NSDA tournament in Arizona. Finally, just two weeks ago, we sent a team to the Harvard Invitational with sophomore Pranav Krishnan becoming the Harvard-speaking champion out of over 420 novice debaters. Now that qualifiers are out of the way, we are so excited to enter the national portion of our season.
DECA. The Shrewsbury High School DECA business team was recently recognized as a Massachusetts Membership Campaign Achievement winner by the National DECA Organization. This award is given to chapters that exemplify tremendous membership growth and teamwork skills. They also competed at their first-ever district tournament, which included approximately 670 students from over 20 schools. Coming in with 30 students, almost half move on to states. We look forward to hearing more about their future success.
Events at SHS. Students have been finding ways to strengthen the SHS community through different events.
National English Honor Society Book Drive. Thanks to the efforts of members of the National English Honor Society, 315 books were donated by, donated by members of our SHS community. We were able to present them to the students of Grafton Street Elementary School the week before break. They intend to use them as part of a bingo night where kids receive a book for every bingo they get.
Science Fair. On February 13th, students across every grade presented their science fair project to various classmates, judges, and even parents. From projects on mental health to disease detection, their innovative projects have translated onto a wide scale, impacting our entire community. Of the 27 projects, 12 are now moving on to regionals. We wish them the best of luck with all their future opportunities.
Black History Assembly. On February 15th of 2023, the Black History Committee presented their 23rd Annual Schoolwide Assembly. From a Guess the Country competition to singing performances, students did an incredible job of highlighting the legacies of black historical figures. The SHS student body was grateful for the cultural experience as well as the essential reminder, black history is American history.
Soup or Bowl. For the first time since COVID, the Super Bowl was hosted on Friday, February 10th. This soup competition between the teachers was a major success with 19 soup/chili entries. We raised more than $800 for the winners, Mrs. Nguyen and Mr. Brockie, to donate to the Southeast Asian Coalition of Central Massachusetts and the Fisher House, respectively.
Thank you for your continuous support of the SAC. We will now take any questions at this time.
Thank you very, very, very much. We're not yet ready to say goodbye to our couple of seniors. We'll save that for your next or last one. Thank you very, very, very much. Um, we're not yet ready to say goodbye to our couple of seniors. We'll save that for your next or last one. I just want to get that, get that out of the way. Uh, any, any questions or comments from my colleagues? I, I have one. Um, can, the career fair, can you just tell us how in the day that happened and how did kids opt in to go? Is it during an advisory, you know, help, help us understand how, how that worked?
So the career fair was scheduled for um fourth period um on February seventh and they had a signup sheet where students could sign up and there was a, a cap to the amount of students because it was held in the commons. But um yeah, students just got a really great opportunity to look at a lot of businesses, not only in Shrewsbury, but across like many towns.
And were they, um, we've been hearing a lot about career readiness in a whole bunch of different ways. And so were they um, in your, from your, I don't know if any of you attended yourselves, from your perspective, was it about places that are there's sort of career fairs, think in the future of, of, of jobs you could have or job fairs. Chick-fil-A is hiring right now kind of idea, right? And so which, which balance or did it do a little bit of both, if you know?
I think so. I attended and um I found that it did a lot of both, but they also had a lot of internship opportunities for students. For example, like labs. Um, they had a lot of summer opportunities and same with like Selco and Detekt Together. They have a lot of opportunities for high school students to get hired right now as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so very much. It's always a pleasure to have you here. Uh, Dr. Sawyer.
If I can just add about that, I had a chance to attend and it was really, there was a lot of students who were engaged and different, came in different ways. It was also on an early release day uh from school, so it kind of fit into the schedule that way uh as, as a good opportunity. Um, and I want to thank Dr. Lazard and Kathleen Cohen from Dr. Lazard's department, who are doing a lot of the legwork to set up and connect with these businesses um and bring them in. And it was the most sort of diverse set of businesses that I can remember in, in doing this. We did some of that before COVID, of course, and now it's glad that we're able to do these in-person um events again. But uh, again, there's some opportunities, I think, that students either for jobs uh or for thinking about things like internships that might be uh prompting them to think about what they might study uh post-high school or, or potentially even a career eventually. Um, and that's something that we're continuing to try to expand uh opportunities for students to get those connections. Um, in addition to that, just want to thank uh the SAC again. Uh, you know, there's a lot of excellent things happening at the high school, some really strong uh performances with some of the co-curricular activities, uh, which we're uh always pleased to see. And uh, you know, again, uh, you know, it's a very busy time of year, uh, but I've had an opportunity to be there for some of the things like the fair, like the Capstone projects. Um, and it's always great to see, just like our presentation before you, um, all these different opportunities to demonstrate the kinds of learning opportunities that our students are receiving. So appreciate you reporting out on them to the community and uh look forward to seeing you again before too long.
Thank you very much. Yeah, have a lovely evening. Uh, our next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment and this is our um pre-K to twelve school space study and report. Uh, for those who are tuning in, as part of our funding for the Beal School Feasibility Study Project, funds were set aside to conduct a comprehensive uh space study of the district's school facilities uh in order to determine the condition and future needs regarding educational space at the preschool, elementary, middle, and high school levels. This study was conducted by Lamoropagano Associates Architects and is in its final phase. And I know we have um, we have Mr. Brennan here from Lamoropagano, but along joining him, uh, Mr. Collins and uh also Mr. Baldinger from our, from the schools and the town uh to sort of share, share where, where we are. Dr. Sawyer, would you like to add anything to before, before we begin here?
No, other than saying that this has been something that's been uh in the works for a long time, it was part of the original appropriation for the Beal feasibility study. That after the Beal project was done, uh, that we would engage in uh a capital investment, an assessment study of our, our various school buildings. Uh, there was one done about twenty-five years ago when Floral Street School had been finished being built, uh, which laid out a variety of options for the town to pursue over that time. And, you know, since that time, obviously, there's been multiple projects that uh the town is, most recently Beal, but of course Sherwood before that, the new high school going back to two thousand and two, the renovation of Oak Middle School, Parker Road preschool expansion and renovation. So there's been a lot of capital improvements over the past quarter century. And we need to start looking ahead um to what's happening, coming, you know, and, and again, I just want to emphasize, this is a, 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 a study and an assessment uh that'll present some uh suggested priorities and options. There's nothing imminent. There's no decisions that have been made uh about any particular projects, uh, but this is going to be a very valuable uh report, once it's finalized and published uh for the community. Uh, and I'm excited to hear um and have the community here this evening what some of the key findings are. So welcome, Mr. Brennan, and I appreciate Mr. Collins and Mr. Baldinger being here.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Thank you all for having us. Um, it's been an absolute pleasure to be able to engage with you yet again on another capital planning study like this um for the town of Shrewsbury. Uh, as Dr. Sawyer mentioned, we were engaged a little over a year ago, um, and the scope of the study included looking at all your schools, including your central administration. Uh, and what we did uh initially, and much like when we do any project, where do we start? Well, what we started with this was your projected enrollments. And the town procured the services of a demographer um who specializes in understanding birth rates and, and houses and new developments. And he ultimately came up with these long-term uh forecasts. So this was really the basis of this study. Is we took a look at these forecasts based off of the institutional knowledge we have from working and collaborating with you on several projects, as Dr. Sawyer mentioned, since the mid-nineties. Um, we took this information and, and started to look at, as you see in the next chart, really, what are the deficits that you are facing? Or where is the enrollment trending overall? And, and from there, we start to get a pulse on where your needs start to arise. That only gives you the first piece of the picture to really understand what your long-term needs are going to be. So um, as you can see here, a lot of them are trending um steady, slight increases, slight decreases, kind of pretty level overall in, in some respects. But as I mentioned, that really doesn't tell the whole story. And, and what starts to tell that story is what we did here is what we looked at was the design capacity. So all of your buildings were built at different periods of time and they were all built on different educational pedagogies, um, enrollments, uh, kind of really what education was at that time. Well, now we're looking at it through the lens of twenty-first century learning. And based off that institutional knowledge that we have collected and the input we were able to gather from the current administrative uh group in the executive committee, we were able to take a look at those buildings. If we took off the modulators, and the reason why, as you see, is the third bullet point here is why we took off the modulators is the state will not participate in a project i- if you were to carry those modulators forward. So that's one aspect. The other aspect is most of those modulators are kind of coming to the end of their useful life. They are called modular construction. They do have a useful um span. Uh, unfortunately, like we see from many communities, these can often be the nicer spaces, the more, well, air-conditioned spaces um in comparison to the remainder of the school. So part of this was we removed those as part of the square footage that we applied to these buildings. Now, some of these buildings have a lot of modulators to make up for the capacities. A good example of this would be like Spring Street. So once you remove those, in the next chart, you're going to see what the populations these schools can support based off of your enrollment policy, which you have certain students per classroom size, and your uh special education populations. How many spaces would we need to co-op to support your special ed demographics that you have at each of these levels? So when we started to look at that, you start to see the chart here where you're seeing the enrollment. So we have this current year's enrollment, the ten-year delta, and then we look at design capacities. And the design capacities you see there are representative of your class range sizes that you have allocated to all your different grade levels. Uh, you have different class sizes, uh, starting even in pre-K, K to four, and then your middle school, and then your high school. You have all different ranges. So that's what the min and max are in those ranges and the mean is right in the middle. Interestingly enough, all your ranges cover three digits. It's usually seventeen to nineteen, so as you can imagine, those correlate respectively to all of those. So then when you really kind of hone in on design capacity versus your enrollments uh for ten years out, this is where you really start to get a good picture of what your deficits are purely on a space need. And from here, you're seeing at the elementary school level, uh, as an aggregate, uh, you're, you're short of uh are, are going down about seventy-five seats. And you start to see with the capacity, uh, there's some capacity at Beal. You can start to see Coolidge um is, you know, has a deficit of almost a hundred, which is about one-third. You start to see the correlations of these schools and these facilities that start to have bigger deficits. As I alluded to earlier, Spring Street having a large majority of modulators, that's where like a larger deficit of a hundred and fifty students comes up. Um, middle school, and then the one that should really probably jumps off the page to a lot of you when you see it right now is the five hundred students at the high school. Um, so to give a little background on that, the original high school was designed with some idea of future proofing around it. The design enrollment uh for that school uh was like fourteen seventy-five originally. Uh, and we plan for core facilities to support. And what I mean by core facilities is, you know, you have one of the last field houses in, in the state, but also the larger cafeteria, uh, the correct number of plumbing fixtures, um, your auditorium. A lot of those, as you'll see as I get into it, support a larger enrollment that you're currently facing, but where you're starting to see the issues that you have are in those, supporting those academic spaces. Here's just another representation of those deficits that you're seeing. Um, and so you can start to see them as an aggregate across all the different grade levels. Here is what it starts to look like by facility. You really start to get a sense of what facilities are facing the greatest deficits or have the greatest amount of capacity. Uh, as I mentioned earlier with Beal, you know, one-third on Coolidge, Floral's pretty level across, Spring. We're looking at like a fifty percent deficit due to the fact that I think it's almost forty percent of that educational spaces are supported via modulators for that facility. Uh, Patton, a similar one-third deficit. Sherwood, pretty level across, Oak, pretty level across. For the most part, you have the capacity and your ranges to support. And then that larger deficit at the high school. So, once we kind of got our arms around on paper, where you're, you're, you're facing the biggest deficits as space needs, we went out and visited every facility. Uh, and when I say we, it was us and our consulting engineers. We had a mechanical engineer, electrical engineer, uh, plumbing, fire protection, and we toured all the facilities. And from that, uh, we did an existing facilities assessments uh in the draft report that we're pulling together now. You will be able to see all those reports. Uh, not only in their raw form in the appendix, but in a more kind of uh well-formatted, cohesive, uh, you know, easier to digest format. Uh, we use a lot of kind of consumer report, good, bad, fair. We want to make this as, as uh, as easily understandable to anybody that, that may be picking up this report. And from there, we, we uh did what you're about to see for every single school. So we started initially with the site, looking at what you have for space, what you have for restrictions of our wetlands, parking, what assets you have around sports fields, and really logged in the condition of all these things, not only for the site, but then for the overall building in and of itself. We also captured individually for, within all of these sections, really, the deficits that you're s- facing and that design capacity that I mentioned earlier. So this is an example as a walkthrough of the high school. Then we really started to break down where those deficits are in the building itself. So this chart here, uh, as you can see, is the color-coded floor plans to the left. And if you look at the legend in, in the lower right, it's academic spaces, core spaces, as I mentioned earlier, those shared uh, you know, gymnasium, auditorium, cafeteria, and then the administrative spaces. And the larger chart, you start to see really where those big pressure points are, particularly at the high school. Uh, the lion's share of it is at, at the core academic spaces. Uh, you know, you, you have an existing uh seventy-three thousand square feet and you're in need of a forty, an additional forty-one thousand square feet. So, you know, almost it over fifty percent, it's about sixty percent well more needed um in that capacity. Same thing with special ed, you know, these buildings, the, the way special education is delivered today, uh, the growing in those populations over time um is really getting a lot of attention and has been recognized by the state in their space summary template. This is based off of that institutional knowledge we mentioned previously that would be required to support the rest out. And then rounding out uh for the high school, you know, the vocational technology. The state in their baseline guidelines uh has recognized the need for STEM and STEAM and vocational learning. Not in the necessarily traditional vocational school setting, but in a more localized uh, uh, at it, individual high schools. We're seeing it throughout all districts. Uh, Nishova, for instance, even though they're part of Minuteman Regional, they are, have three or four vocational programs in their new school that they're proposing coming up soon.
If I can just interject one piece here and give you a minute to uh have you catch your breath. That, what, I think it's really important what you just said with respect to the space allocations.
Yeah.
And that there um is a method to that. And it wasn't the LPA uh opinion about how much space we ought to have, or it wasn't the school administrator saying this is how much space we need, we think we need to have.
Correct.
It's really based upon the Massachusetts School Building Authority, um, based upon the enrollment numbers that are projected. And that they have a, uh, so you referred to a space summary template and that there are uh standard space allocations based upon the number of students in each uh school, in each grade level.
Yep.
So it's, it's a standard, um, and it was not an opinion-based kind of thing from either party.
Nope. And, and to elaborate a little bit further on that, the institutional knowledge I referred to that we applied to that is the state, when you have a recognized enrollment policy, uh, your enrollments are lower, your teacher-to-student ratio is slightly lower than what the state allocates. They honor that policy and allow you to get some additional classroom space based off of that policy. So it allows you to continue to deliver education the way you want in this town, the way you've chosen to deliver education in this town. So it's great that the state honors that and you have a written, voted-on policy. And beyond that, the, the special education, it, we based it off of what we've seen historically in town in our most recent experience with Beal, the percentages of populations you need. Cause the state allows the DESE secondary oversight of the special ed programs in and of themselves. So there's a secondary review. It's a little more open-ended there, but the percentages and allocations that we did is based off of the, the demographics we know that you have in town.
Can I just ask one question while we're on this slide? It feels important. They, um, uh, you referenced our, uh, our student-teacher ratio. And I think for lots of people in our community, that's really, we talk about that as our class size guidelines. And so those are voted on, you know, so we don't, it always has ratio behind it, but the guidelines are sort of what we are often talking about, are our classes within guidelines or not in guidelines. And for those who are paying, uh, tuning in here, that's voted on by the school committee, um, was voted on many years ago. We have not made changes to that in, in, in recent years, but we have different allocations for guidelines at each of the grade levels. So you're applying the high school grade level to the high school space. The kindergarten grade level, when you have a kindergarten room, right? And so that, that, that is the Shrewsbury specific additional tweak here.
Yes.
But am I also right in saying that the other piece is it's also determined by our population of kids with some of these, that fall into some of these demographics? And so how large our special ed population is, or how large our, our English language learner, which is again going to be Shrewsbury-specific. And then you apply a formula to it to ultimately get to this sort of middle row.
Exactly. Yep. That's exactly what we did.
Thank you.
So the interesting thing, so, so speaking of allocations, the bottom-line number here can be a little misleading when you look at the total net flo- the total floor area required, showing that you only need thirty, thirty-six thousand square feet more, but we're not going to take over half of your fieldhouse to, to support some of these spaces or take over half of your, your auditorium, you know? The way these spaces are allocated doesn't necessarily tell the full picture. So when we broke it down in these smaller charts, you realize that that additional education, uh, educational space is needed is a pure add. It would, it would need to be added holistically. Speaking of space allocations, the other thing we did for every school you'll see in the report is you see these over-under uh floor plans that we like to refer to them as. What we do is we look at, the state has guidelines on individual spaces, a min and max range on how big or how small that space would be. And we took those ranges and applied them to all your spaces, all your classrooms, your auditorium, your media center. And we decided, or we didn't decide, we let the numbers tell us, were they ten percent over, ten percent over, under was the delta we picked. And as you can see, there is a deficit of ten, over ten percent uh in a lot of the classroom spaces, science labs, your media center here, your auditorium, some of those vocational, technical spaces. It would have been more of the science labs back during this era when that was built. Uh, so you start to get a picture of, of where your deficits are. Here's just a quick overview of all the first-floor plans of all the schools that were studied to give you a sense of where those deficits are. Um, and, and it's, you start to see the ones that really are facing uh greater, you know, constraints than others at the moment. So after we had all that information, we looked at every single school as if it was an individual project. And when we looked and assessed at each site uh and building to see what capacity or feasibility does it have to support particular solutions. Um, and what your, this chart here captures those particular solutions. So, you know, what schools have a good viability of meeting your ten-year enrollment through addition renovation? That second column there, uh, as I mentioned, these kind of consumer report bubbles, is it a good option with a solid uh fill? Is it a marginal option? As you can see, Coolidge would be marginal to try to put in addition. That building already has a lot of additions on it. I don't think we need to add any more additions to it. Uh, it'd be, be quite a challenge. Whereas, you know, Floral or, or, or Spring Street to meet, you know, those ten-year moments, we do see some good possibilities there. So as you work through the rest of the chart, uh, you'll see, you know, new school on existing site. Some of those are really good at supporting uh that opportunity, some not so much because there's really not. because there's really not much land around the remaining school to build a new school. You'd have to probably maybe vacate that site completely to be able to support new construction. And then we looked at new construction on alternative sites. And we also looked at, you know, schools of three hundred or six hundred student enrollments. The target around the three hundred is, if you're really paying attention, Patton, Coolidge, and Spring all have enrollments right around three hundred students. So, that was kind of really a baseline is if a site can support an enrollment of three hundred students, it was a really good test fit that we could quickly do. And as you can imagine, six hundred would be, hey, if we were to ever look at two schools together, could a support, should a site support capacity of that many students? So, after we looked at everything, looked at the viability of all these on their individual solutions, we really started to look at what is this data telling us and what are the priorities we're seeing? What is this information really telling us? And what really rose to the top on a pure basis in space need is the high school. You're really overcapacity, utilization of that building is all close to a hundred percent. The state ideally likes to see buildings with lower utilization, closer to eighty percent. So, as you can imagine, all that additional space and what that means for those students are in great need to be able to deliver the education that Shrewsbury has been known to offer to continue in the future and meet that need. The next priority was obviously Coolidge, mentioned it earlier, about the multiple additions. That building, as far as its age, the construction types, the number of additions, its location on the site, it's a pretty tight site. Those of you that have ever had to drop your kids off there or spend any time there will know, is also rolls into a high priority. Expanding the district-wide pre-K was another one that came out of that. May or may not know Springfield just approved universal pre-K. It's something that is coming. It is something that's hit Massachusetts. It's obviously something that's cognizant, has been brought forth by the administration and the executive committee as something to look at for this report. And then really parity, you know, through the Beal project, through all this other potential improvements and long-term capital plans create parity among the K to four schools. You address your building stock and upgrade your spaces to twenty-first century learning. And then net-zero upgrades. As you know, legislation, we're really on the cusp of the first time that sustainability is being legislated. It's always been goals, it's always been aspirational, but now it's really becoming legislated. So, it's something that we did put into this report. There are some pathways and roadmaps to get there, and there's some costs that we've put there. Providing air conditioning, this is an equity thing across the schools. You utilize your schools year-round. This isn't a necessarily nice-to-have. This is a commonplace thing we are seeing in K to twelve schools today. Some may go on the lower end with dehumidification because with current systems, really, you just get the humidity out of the system. It really is quite comfortable. And lastly, unified school department administration was one of the last priorities. And not the last, but just the last on that slide. And from there, we developed budgets, and these budgets were based off of 2024 pricing for when you do see the report. And were really based off a lot of those square footage numbers that we had talked about to meet those enrollments, like you saw with Shrewsbury. System upgrades are included in that as far as air conditions for all buildings. And then the net-zero upgrades. The solution to these net-zero upgrades, for those of you that this may be an interesting topic for you or something that concerns you greatly, there's a lot of different ways to get there. Until we see how the legislation proves out, as you can imagine, you can make a lot of improvements to insulation and windows and other things. But for instance, if you take something like Shrewsbury High, those windows, those buildings envelope, they're really not all that old. So, in that particular solution, you might look at alternatives in offsetting your consumption. You may start going towards electrification of mechanical and building systems, or maybe a hybrid where you still have some fossil fuels until the technology gets there. Don't want to get too in the weeds, but around hot water demands and everything else, the technology and power supply is not quite there in a lot of respects, or it can be burdensome. And then offsetting that with credits or PVs. We included the cost for your electrical loads where you'd go all-electric and how much it would cost to support a PV array. So, here, I just gave you a glimpse of what we did for all the different solutions for the high school to meet that additional, almost eighty thousand square feet that would be needed on the building. We connect the two academic wings as a potential solution. Here is a potential solution that we did for Coolidge, if we were to do a three-hundred-student building behind there, looking at an expanded pre-K. Here would be at the back of Parker Road where you'll entertain a one-story building to support your current waitlist needs. Here is a solution where we looked at a three-hundred-student K to four with a pre-K wing attached to it for the district-wide at the Coolidge site. And as I mentioned earlier, we did this for all the different sites. So, when you get the report, you're going to get a glimpse of what all those solutions look like. And then to give you a sense of what this priority means and how it is captured in the report, as you may or may not know, the town campus study did look at the town hall and its needs. The school department was engaged during that process, and based on that report, about six thousand net square feet is needed. And the spaces are currently dispersed all throughout town, town hall, Parker Road, and at various schools throughout the district. To really kind of continue delivering the education you have, we see a strong need, and they would need less space than they're currently occupying throughout the district where they to be consolidated also. Already touched a little bit on this, the different roadmaps. I've got ahead of myself a little bit. But ultimately, you know, as I mentioned, you can, when you're doing new construction, you try to do those, you know, initial costs, long ROI or short ROI, long-term value things built in. And then you look to do offsets in user education. So, just to kind of recap, as mentioned, after we even looked at the priorities and assessed them against each other in that respect, the high school, given just the space deficits, I hate to kind of almost say this, but the fact that you do have modules at some of these other schools, this report, while it's a great thing to compare them apples to apples and remove the modulators due to state regulations and what that would mean for you going forward, those are still some good stopgap measures in the meantime. But your pressures that you're seeing at the high school capacity-wise, that overcrowding is pretty substantial. And we've seen some other municipalities recently get to have new projects through the state funding pipeline when they've opened dramatically overcapacity. Marlboro and Hawkeington are two examples of that. If you're curious what I mean by that as far as overcapacity, both of them completed schools within the last five years, and MSBA has already let them back in to build another school. So, they don't ever really want to see that. They want to see these numbers prove outright, and for that matter. So, at this point, I'll let you guys ask any questions if you have. Thank you for letting me get all this up.
Thank you very, very much. I've seen some early drafts, and this is incredibly comprehensive piece of work. And I'm really thankful to the forward-thinking for those, I was not here at the time, who decided that this should be part of the Beal study and be part of the funding to sort of help us set a path forward. Dr. Sawyer, I wonder what some early thoughts that you have? Because I'm sure all of my colleagues have thoughts. There's a lot here for us.
Sure. Well, I mean, I think that what rises right to the top, as Mr. Brennan said, is the severe overcrowding at the high school. That's not going to abate based on this longer-term enrollment projection. And we're already maximizing use of that space. And, you know, what occurs to me, of course, is that if there are future needs or desires that we wanted to expand programming in a variety of ways, lack of space right now is a very significant impediment for that. And it's just an overcrowded building. I mean, I think it meets the threshold of sphere overcrowding. And perhaps before I continue, I'd ask Mr. Collins, I think it's probably appropriate to mention that we've been very successful, obviously, over time the last couple of projects with Sherwood and Beal, which were constructed under what was then, had been reconstituted at a state program around supporting school buildings, which is the establishment of the Mass School Building Authority, been some time now. But the high school was built under an old program that was under the Department of Education at the state level. It shifted under the Treasury Department, and that's something that has been very beneficial to us. But it's a very specific kind of program, and, you know, you have to really put some things forward to even get them to consider whether or not they might do something far into the future. Maybe you could talk a bit about the statement of interest and what that means because the window's open right now at the state level.
Sure, yep. And, you know, certainly the benefits of working with the state Massachusetts School Building Authority is that they will provide grant funding for projects like these. And with respect to the Beal project, for example, which on a budgetary basis was just over ninety million dollars, the MSBA awarded a grant up to thirty-four million dollars, or about a third of the cost. So, that relieves the taxpayer of that bearing the full cost of a project. So, it's important to work with the Mass School Building Authority and within their regulations to help us with our capital, future capital needs. So, to that end, how do they select projects for funding? They have an annual application process that they open up for a window of time between January and April every year. And it's an application period, just like, you know, other grant application periods and forms. And we make our best case around the needs that we have, and then put that forth. And then the Mass School Building Authority will review all those in the context of all the applications that they receive. And the worst-case school is the winner, so to speak. So, those that have the highest need based upon the priorities that they have established would be those that would be receiving funding up to a certain cap because they have limited funding. And because of rising construction costs in the past year or two, the past couple of cycles, they're actually funding fewer, fewer number of projects. So, with respect to this year's cycle, the window is open now. School districts are eligible in partnership with their Board of Selectmen or city council to make application. It has to be a joint effort between the school committee and the Board of Selectmen to submit an application so that everybody knows that the community is going in eyes wide open and with a certain level of consensus. And that application is a no-obligation application. So, if you were to be accepted, it doesn't necessarily mean that you have to move forward with them. It provides the option to move forward with them. And so, it's basically a no-cost option, other than the level of effort that you need to put into the application, which, you know, in our case would be done as a partnership with Mr. Baldinger and myself, and presented to the school committee, you know, at an upcoming meeting. So, that's the process, and I don't know if you want to talk about a potential...
The only thing I would just add is that, you know, again, it's a multi-year process. And people who are, people who submitted last year, I think, are just finding out, who submitted a year ago, whether or not the MSBA is interested in potentially going forward. And then there's like a, almost part of a year-long window for towns to decide if they want to move forward or not, and then you start moving into the process, which we're familiar with from Sherwood and from Beal. But, you know, any kind of project is years away. But even knowing whether the MSBA would be interested, MSBA would be interested in working with us, if something were to be submitted this year, we wouldn't even know until a year from now whether or not they had called our number, so to speak, to say we're interested in potentially partnering. And then there's a whole lot of hoops to jump through after that potentially.
To your point, you know, the Beal project, again, the community, Shrewsbury, you know, submitted a statement of interest in 2015. And that Beal school was successful, of course, and that opened in 2021. So, it's a six-year cycle, from kind of beginning to end, if you are selected. And that's a big kind of premise if you are.
So, I think, I want to open it up for questions from my colleagues. But I think I'd like to ask Dr. Sawyer, you and Mr. Collins, and we come back to us on the meeting, on the fifteenth, we're meeting again in two weeks, to suggest, you know, some might look at this and say, "That's a nice new building." And so, I think those enrollment, those enrollment numbers over time are really important to look at. We got to this place pretty quickly after that building opened. But also a little bit more about the MSBA process and timeline. And I think, you know, certainly consideration for my colleagues about whether moving forward with a statement of interest for the reasons that you've laid out. But we've jumped ahead to solutioning pretty quickly, and you're here to just share an assessment. And so, I want to make sure we have a chance for questions. Please, Ms. Fritz.
I think as a community, we've been talking about the high school overcrowding for years. It's nothing new. It's something that, while we were talking about Beal, we also were talking about the overcrowding at the high school. So, even if we had unlimited funding, we still couldn't add academics. And our concern as a board, we're really worried about voc experiences. And we can't add anything, even if we had all the money in the world, because we have no space. So, we want to make sure our students are getting a well-rounded experience, but we can't do that because we don't have the space. So, for me, looking at this, I'm really glad that this was part of that. You know, what we thought when we were building Beal, you need a plan to figure out into the future. That's flexible, so you can tweak it because things are going to change. And Pat, I think the last one was nineteen ninety-seven, our last one. So, it's very old. It's time for a new one. And again, we're just looking at what we need going forward, like you do with your own home. And one question I do have, it's for Mr. Baldinger. When you look at buildings and aging buildings, so putting money into something that could be really expensive and isn't what we really want to do, to me, is not where I really would want to spend my money. So, when you're looking at these priorities, not so much in enrollment, but I'm also looking at aging, modulators, and all of those things. I'm thinking there's a lot of costs with that as well.
Sure, yeah. I mean, we have about a million square feet of schools. So, there's constant issues in upkeep, just like your home. You want to keep your home in good condition, so that's what we work really hard to do. So, you know, newer buildings, obviously, that is simpler. Older buildings, you really have to spend a lot of, put a lot of thought into what you're going to prioritize and what you're going to add on, you know, working with the school district, understand what their needs are for changes. But, you know, they all have, you know, their basic skeleton that we have to keep running. You know, aging HVAC systems or roof systems or window systems. So, it is a lot of, a lot of effort and a lot of difficulty determining how we're going to fund things. You know, that's a forever process, no matter how many new buildings we have. That will never go away. But, you know, it certainly, it makes the job exciting.
That's a good way to phrase it.
That's the word.
Thank you.
Yeah, just some comments. First off, thank you to Sean and the team for this comprehensive report. I did get a preview of that draft as well, about three hundred and twenty-three slides. I'm big on like less is more, but that was a very easy read, I have to say. But, and similar to what Ms. Fritz said, this, I mean, it's not breaking news that the high school is overcrowded, but this just kind of lays it out for us a little better. And when I think about that four hundred and ninety-nine students over the design capacity over the mean, I think you mentioned, which is twelve fifty, I think about the class sizes that I've seen now in my seventh consecutive year at the high school as a parent, on average, somewhere in the mid-four hundreds. And it stays steady if we go back to the January twenty-fifth meeting we had on student enrollment. That doesn't really get any better as we progress into 2031. My son's class was the highest, I think, it was five oh one. So, I think about that number, four ninety-nine, I think that's an entire class, right, that were overcapacity. So, it is very interesting to look through. It's a lot of information to unpack, but I do appreciate it. And, you know, I mean, the leadership at the high school has been doing more with less space, you know, constantly since we exceeded that capacity at the high school. I think it was somewhere around two thousand six oh seven, and that number's just grown, you know, since then. And, you know, every so often, Mr. Bzidlo comes in and presents to us about, you know, how the space is utilized, and you see a lot of red spaces across all the floor plans. So, it is not a surprise, but it's definitely interesting to take it in a bit. That and the other buildings that you evaluated. So, thank you so much for that. Appreciate it.
Just a similar comment. I found this study to be extraordinarily useful, and I highly recommend members of the community engage with it. Obviously, building projects take many years. The town lacks the financial capacity to do multiple capital projects at once. So, these types of efforts... these types of efforts have to be planned out and spaced very carefully over years to make sure we're using, obviously, taxpayer resources wisely, but also to make sure we're paying attention to our buildings. These are very, each municipal building is a very expensive investment that needs to be maintained, just like you need to maintain your home, you need to maintain your municipal properties. And as we've done projects in the past years, whether it be Sherwood or Beal, you know, I recall getting questions about what about Coolidge, or some other obvious issues. And I think that the study, as detailed as it is, really goes into the challenges that each of our spaces have, quantifies a lot of that and helps someone absorbing it to understand what is manageable and how it might be manageable, and what may be hitting a point where something has to be done and is not manageable anymore. Of all of the needs before us, obviously, especially having just, just done something fairly significant in the past few years when it comes to elementary capacity in our overall, across the elementary system, the high school, to me, is clearly the most critical need, as well as one that does not present for a lot of creative options to solve. I certainly would be in support of exploring avenues that would avail Shrewsbury of state financial resources to help address that situation.
Thank you very much. Anything, I think, I would certainly echo my colleagues that I think capital planning is essential for any, for, certainly, any municipality, and part of, part of that, part of that is financial planning, but also part of this is the educational planning, of what our, our buildings can limit or provide opportunities based on how they're designed and how they're, how they're used, so we know the space impacts programming. But I think that, I think we also have a bit of a story to tell, because some people have been paying a lot of attention to this, and I think it's important that everybody knows sort of where, where we are. And frankly, for Ramiro Pagano and all the many consultants and participants who did this work, assessing our space needs is the very first step. So thank you for all of, all of the efforts. I know it's been, you know, a year long. And while we have known that the high school is crowded, students passing in the hallway know the high school is crowded, staff who share space know it's crowded, I certainly would agree that it is, it is acute. And when I look at those space needs, when you're crossing, cutting across academic space, special education space, and vocational space, that's what we're here to do. You're hitting all of the things that we're really here to do for our, for our students. So I'm going to propose we bring this back on our agenda in, in two weeks' time to talk about the high school. And also, I think we have some important work to think about, the elementary, you're right, people have been talking about Coolidge for a long time, too. So I think we, I think we have some important work to do as a, as a committee, Dr. Sawyer, so let's bring that back on our agenda and, and talk about some of the steps forward. Maybe we have something to explore at the high school, and I think a lot more work still to do as well. And you have anything further you'd like to add?
No, I think that captures it. I just want to thank Mr. Baldinger and Bill Toto, who works as our lead for the Public Buildings Division, for all the constant, ongoing maintenance work that they are doing to upkeep our buildings. And Mr. Collins, obviously, for his work in collaborating with public buildings, but also with LPAA around this study. And Mr. Brennan has done an outstanding job. When that, when that study is finalized, which is in the very near future, that will end up being published, obviously, we'll make sure people have access to it. These slides from tonight will be on the website tomorrow. But Katie Crockett, who couldn't be here from LPA, obviously, part of this process as well, but we, you know, continue to have a very strong partnership, and we appreciate this very detailed work that you've done. This will be, help us build a roadmap for the future in terms of school needs in Shrewsbury for a very long time into the future. So thank you and appreciate it.
Yes.
Senator, if I could, I would be remiss, or I would be remiss if we did not give a quick shout-out to former town manager, Mr. Margato, who was, had the foresight to include the funding in the Beal School feasibility study to conduct this study, forward-looking study for the next school capital plan. So thanks to him for having that foresight before he left and retired.
These buildings take a long time. Someone had to have a good idea many years ago. So yes, thank you though for noting that, much appreciated. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this evening. Our next item, also timed schedule appointment, is on our STAR Student Learning Assessment, and that is a report. Over the past three years at our elementary and middle levels, the district has utilized the STAR Student Learning Assessment to better identify and address student learning needs by using a common tool to monitor students' academic progress. Students are assessed multiple times a year in both reading and math, using the STAR online assessment in order to identify, support, and ultimately track academic outcomes for our students. And I welcome Ms. Amy Cloud, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, to join us tonight to overview some of the data, as I believe, last year, this year, and some state benchmarks. So I will, I'm happy to turn it over to you. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk about the assessment. We've been using it in grades K to six for two years now. So although I'm the only person at the, at the table, grade-level teams across five elementary schools and both middle schools have been really engaged in this work, and I'm very grateful for their support and for the leadership of other curriculum instruction and assessment folks for thinking about how best to implement this tool and learn from it as we're going. So today's objectives are pretty basic. I'm going to give you an update on the report that you initially heard when we talked about introducing the tool to you. I want to share some context about it and using kind of a, a sense of how we've approached assessment in the past in general, and then tell a story about the data, much like I did with the MCAS report. You have a lot of information in your reports, I don't want to rehash all of that. But, you know, for folks following at home, they can, they can look more for more details there, including annual comparison and other descriptions about the kinds of reports that are in STAR. But I want to devote the portion of this presentation really to thinking about why we're using a universal screener, kind of what, what it can tell us and how we use that information in classrooms across the district. So to start with the why, I mean, we understand from Simon Sinek about how important it is when we're adopting a new tool to kind of make sure everybody understands the purpose of the tool. So this really eases the burden for individual educators by helping kind of common metrics for how we're tracking student progress, but it improves the district as an organization because it gives us feedback about what students need and then how well the practices we have in place are meeting those needs. So when we're talking about implementing a system or a universal screener, universal means it touches all kids, and a system means that we put something in, into the, into the process, and then we get something out of the process that then feeds into a cycle of improvement. So it aligns also with our strategic priorities that you know we adopted, namely, making sure that we have a common approach to ensuring everyone has equitable access and opportunity for learning, and also that we're analyzing data. So when you start collecting information across students from kindergarten to grade six, you quickly accumulate an awful lot of information. And having a dashboard that can simplify that information to make sure we're getting what we need, and that, in a sense, the information is filtered so that it can be useful, is of huge value. And so we're not just thinking about how to intervene with students that need support, although that's an important outcome. We're also thinking about what is the nature of the supports that students need tell us about instruction? And how can we adjust some of our practices to better be proactively supporting students as they grow? Obviously, the pandemic impacted some of that proactive teaching. So as we're looking at the STAR assessment, we're implementing something at a time where implementation was kind of challenged, just they didn't follow a smooth pattern. And we have some data from kids that's been definitely impacted by their experience right when we were implementing it. So we're still new to the process and thinking about which reports are most helpful, but I just want to take you through kind of the, the way we've looked at assessment in the past. So when we're looking at a universal screening tool, we're looking to think about which students are doing well, which students need more support to do well, because we can expect that there's variability among all students. Some students are going to be better in reading than math, they might not need supports in both subjects, some students may need support in both subjects. How do we organize for that in the classroom? Because we expect that teachers are going to pull small groups together as part of their normal practice. But then how do we look at what's happening in those small groups and ensure that kids are making sufficient progress, that they don't need extra support? And so having a common data tool and kind of common criteria for looking at what kids need more is really helpful. I think about this kind of like, Katie Novak uses this metaphor, and I go back to it, because we all know when we're building a snowman, if the base isn't really strong, the structure's not going to hold. So the premise of multi-tiered systems of support is that it's built on really strong instruction as a basic premise. And then on top of that, some students are going to need really strong instruction and a little bit more support. And classroom teachers can provide both of those tiers. And then there are some students that need specialized support, that's that third ball, right? So we don't want to just give kids the top part. Kids that need specialized support still need that very strong base. And so when we were looking at assessment, the need for the universal screener came out of noticing that we had different systems within each schools for thinking about how we respond to data. So even though we had kind of a common assessment at the elementary level, the elementary-level assessment didn't necessarily speak to the middle levels assessment. And the way people responded to the elementary data varied by school, with the best of intentions. But I think having something that's common across those grade spans helps us make sure that we're paying to, attention to transitions as kids move from one level to another, and also helps us think about how students are performing with an equity lens, so that we can say, for example, maybe we allocate fewer literacy tutors to a school where we have fewer readers in need. And switching to that has been something made easier by looking at the common data and a common tool. So the goal of this is to really create information that teams can use. Another benefit of the assessment is relatively brief, so students can complete that within fifteen to ten minutes. And then as students are taking the, the assessment, it's a universal screener. So students will get by design questions that they can answer and questions that they can't, and then the sophomore, the software gives them a follow-up question. And that's okay if it takes some students longer. And we've been thinking about, you know, for students that are really struggling with, with reading, how often do we screen them, and do we have faster tools? And one of the benefits of the assessment system is that it also has these intermittent tools, which I'll tell you more about. So a little bit more about what the STAR assessment does. So when we're looking at the STAR assessment, we're looking at an assessment of both reading and math. For students who are having difficulty reading independently, they would take the STAR Early Literacy Test, which includes math as well, because you understand that if you're not reading independently, reading the math questions might be a challenge. But once students are independent, they take STAR and math as separate tests. And this gives us kind of tests in four domains for math, so that looks at numbers and operations, algebra, geometry and measurement, and data, as well as kind of analysis and probability. And in for, and for reading, we're looking at how well kids analyze literary texts, their word skills and knowledge, their ability to analyze an argument and to evaluate text, comprehension, and then understanding kind of the author's craft as kids get older. And you can see there are different items by test, and then as kids progress, you can get a sense of how they're doing in a couple of ways. But essentially, this graph illustrates kind of how the, the software adapts based on how students answer questions. So if you're looking at the green, that's a correct response. The red is incorrect, and then this, the gray is kind of how answers might vary. But over time, and especially if we have multiple years of assessments, we can kind of look at a trend of how well kids are progressing against their peers, which is the percentile rank, or also against state benchmarks, which is more of a scaled score, it's separate. But both reports are really helpful to look at. So again, what's the big picture? What do we get from all this data, all the reports in your report? Math scores are recovering faster than reading scores. Students in the upper grades have the biggest gaps. Again, not surprising, given that fourth graders were highly impacted by the disruption caused by the pandemic. We need to look at multiple measures as we track student progress, because STAR is one of them, but we also have common assessments at each grade span, and we have other information like the DRA that I referenced earlier at the elementary that helps us get a sense about weighing the information from different assessments. And we need to focus on both instruction, what is it telling us we need to adjust in teaching, and intervention, what's the best way to help a student who's struggling to be a fluent reader, for example? So this just gives you a sense about, you know, help measures kids against a score, so we can look at how readers are doing compared to other readers that took the test at the same time. And we can look at readers based on the state standards, kind of a projection of how they'll do against the standard for the end of the year. Those are two different measures, but both things are helpful. I think it's worth noting that when you look at the projection of progress, because the standard is at the end of the year, those statistics might look a little scary. It helps us to kind of think about, as I mentioned in the MCAS report, you know, it's, seems to be within ten percent of what our results are, we know that sooner. So it's a helpful tool to have, but it's also depending on when the screener is taken, kids are farther away from that goal. So it's, it's changing over time, and I don't want to put too much stock into either a new tool or one particular aspect of this new tool. So how we're going to be using it, or how we are currently using it. So we've been using assessment to inform instruction for some time. As I've said, this is the result of the DRA assessment, so although we're using STAR universally case six, elementary teachers are continuing to measure reading using this assessment. And this gives you a sense about the bigger impact in fourth grade and third grade, right? Kids who were, who were most affected by losing their foundational reading skills. But I think it also gives you a sense of how kids are doing on one, this one measure is slightly different. The developmental reading assessment measures at the lower grades in fluency and ability to comprehend as they're reading. And it gives you kind of a level that kids could be really confident in their reading. When we're getting to second grade and above, it also asks kids to reflect on reading and writing. And so that writing score impacts kind of kids' ability to progress through the levels, and it can be a little bit more subjective than, say, the STAR assessment. So both things together have informed our thinking about how kids are progressed, and I just think it's helpful as a point of comparison, like, we've been using assessment for some time, and the STAR is just another tool for us to use. The other thing I think it's important to acknowledge is we are looking right now actively at our literacy practice and how well it aligns with the new research about the science of reading. And so the STAR gives us information about the various aspects of reading that are important. Scarborough's Rope is a helpful graphic, I think, for looking at when we're talking about literacy instruction that's aligned with the research. It needs to be focused on both language comprehension, and we had done a good job focusing on that in our curriculum up until this point, and word recognition, which is something we really need to shore up in our practice. We've invested in foundations for a reason, because we noticed that we had that lack. But thinking about how we support students with their phonological awareness, their decoding and spelling, and their retention of, of words that they learned, along with vocabulary, that's something that we need to shift in our practice. And one of the reasons that STAR is a really good match for us is it gives us information about those specific domains, in a way that the DRA, although it was helpful for looking at comprehension, isn't quite as helpful in that, in that way. And again, that goes back to that broad base of the snowman. We may be needing to support readers in those areas of Scarborough's Rope because we didn't have that instruction at the foundational level. So scaled scores just kind of give values based on the benchmarks at the end of the year, talked a little bit about this, but the state image is there because we can look at these scores kind of compared to Massachusetts standards, and we can look at them compared to kind of national standards. The Massachusetts standards are higher, and I think it's also worth reminding everyone as we're looking at it, and we look at metrics for state benchmarks, that, you know, our, our scores in Massachusetts are much higher than other national scores, and our scores in Shrewsbay are higher for Massachusetts. So it doesn't mean that we don't have work to do, we absolutely do, but we're coming from a position of relative strength. So when we get screening data, we can use this right away with grade-level teams, with departments. We get a big-picture sense of how students are doing by level. So this isn't real data, I wouldn't want to project real student data on, on public. But it gives you a sense of students that are at or above the benchmark and kind of the continuum within that. Students in blue who are kind of, were watching their progress, students in yellow who we would intervene and support, and students who need urgent intervention in red. This is what kind of a snapshot of current grade four looks like, if we look at the percentile ranked benchmark, which compares kids that took the test to other kids of the same grade that took, took the test at the same time. So you So you can see, you know, by and large, our grade four students are mostly in the at or above benchmark range, with some students on watch and some students who need intervention. And what we're learning in the second year is that perhaps we want to raise that benchmark a little bit to reflect more of the state standards. This is what kind of this looks like without student names when we're looking at the STAR data together with other information. Because one of the things that's really helpful is that STAR has within it kind of various measures of, for example, fluency screeners. So when you're looking, we can see here's the MCAS scores, each of those lines is a student. I've just removed the column that has their names on the far left. So if you stop at the top line, this student scored kind of in the partially meeting category for MCAS. Their April STAR reading score from last year was in the yellow range. So not urgent intervention, but intervention. Their fall reading score moved them into the watch range. So that student has made growth from one screener window to the another. Then we're looking at the winter STAR reading, now they're in the green. So this student is making effective progress between screening windows. The fluency screen, though, is telling us we really need to look at how well this student is looking, reading when the text gets more complicated. So that gives information to the educators working with the students at the middle level. We really need to focus and monitor just fluency. We don't need to do the whole screener, but we need to see how well this student is doing. And that has to do with kind of the rate that students are reading, their ability to decode longer words, et cetera. And I, I think this speaks to the really hard work that our curriculum teams are doing at every level to take a lot of information and think about, how do we have a systemic response to that? But the big picture, if you look at the colors, because you might be thinking, why is she giving us all this? Is that in the beginning, on the left, you see less green, on the right, you see more green. So while we're starting with, you know, more kids that are in yellow, and that's concerning, over time, we're seeing growth, and, and that's the goal. I mentioned that there's interim assessments, and these are just a sample of interim assessments so that we can track those components of literacy within kindergarten in grade one. So, you know, letter sounds, the ability to take a word and break it into different sounds, letter naming. You can see, these are students in kindergarten. Those were their screening on the early literacy test, because they weren't yet independent in the first two screening windows. And those are some of the things that they're being measured on intermittently. So we talked about the student on that first line at the middle level, working on fluency. This is a good example of how STAR can help us target what students need at the very young levels. And essentially, it allows us to track kids at all levels. You'll see those interim assessments are really based on successful oral, oral reading, grade four and above. But it's helpful to have passages that teachers can print out and have on hand to say, okay, how, I'm worried about Sandy's progress in reading, I'm gonna just sit with her for two minutes and have this quick assessment. And the coordinators, I want to acknowledge Lisa Daly's role and Melissa McCann for math, have been really making sure that we have intermittent screening for everybody we identified in the yellow and the red categories. And so you think about the number of students at the middle level, the importance of a system. They've really got eyes on everyone. So even though we have more need at the upper levels, we also have a really consistent response. And that just feels really gratifying. So I want to just revisit, we're, we're thinking about how it is we're going to improve instruction, that big snowball at the bottom, to include all of the components of literacy. How we're going to think about how we respond to data, and that's in the classroom and then outside the classroom with interventions. And then how we use both of those things together to create a system where all students are supported. Our next administration windows are in April, and we had, we've had three every year. I think it's a really great sign when people say, can we have another one at the end of the year? Because to me, that means they want the latest information so they can anticipate the cohort that's coming to them next year. That's a real statement, I think, of confidence in this assessment. Where in the beginning, this felt like a lot of new learning and it felt a little clunky, we're starting to hit our stride.
Thank you, Amy. There's a lot here, and there's a lot more in our report that was handed to us. Questions from my colleagues?
Thank you, Amy. You're so skilled at what you do. Every time you give us a report, you really take, because our report is very big and you drill it down, so it's very easy to understand. So thank you, I'm always impressed, I just want to say that. And I like that it's data-driven. I mean, we've got a lot of benchmarks that we're looking at, but it's all data-driven. So that gives us those areas that we can see in those colors where we need to do more work. But from a parent's perspective, when I look at it, if my child was not at or above, I would be like, okay, what, what, what are the schools doing for my child? Because that's how we think it's our child. Can you give some examples of what we do when we identify someone in any of the below at or above? Because to me, if you can't read and can't comprehend what you're reading, those other courses or academic, you're gonna have a harder time. So can you just tell us what they do?
Yes, it's, it's, it's a little bit like a puzzle piece, and especially at the middle level where time is kind of tricky. But there is first, kind of the adaptions that happen are expected within the classroom. So I'm going to be making sure everybody has this grade level standard. But I know Amy is really struggling to meet it and needs more time. So I'm going to make sure that I have a small group where Amy can practice this with me. I'm going to target some of the independent work she's doing to give her more time with this in a way that a student who's a fluent reader might have a different, you know, another text or a related work to do. Well, I can shore up some foundational skills. I think there's also kind of literacy tutors. So students that are not making effective progress with that small group within the classroom support could have some support outside the classroom. At the, at the middle level, that support happens during their academic focus block at Sherwood. Oak does not have a time in their day because of their schedule for that. But each team has a structure to think about how to support students. So at both Sherwood and Oak, kids are being screened in the same way, with the same tools. Largely, again, thanks to the work of Lisa Daly and Melissa McCann and the administration at both Sherwood and Oak. And then I think the response is really tailored to what's the area of need. So students would get fluency help, if fluency was the reason that comprehension was really being impacted. You know, if you're sounding out words a little bit at a time, you might lose the thread of what you're reading, especially if it's complicated. We don't want students to miss out on grade level content. So if we're talking in social studies about something, increasingly, teachers are thinking about the same topic, but with different levels of text difficulty, so that all kids can have the conversation about, say, the American Revolution. But they're reading the source materials geared to their independent level. Or if it's really important, we're gonna do a primary source read, we're gonna take a deep dive into the, you know, Declaration, for example. How do we have accommodations or audio support so that kids can access grade level content? Because the challenge is really to make sure that if there's a gap between where a student is and, and their peers are, we want to close the gap, so we, we don't want them to miss out on that really strong instruction. But we also want to make sure that we target what they need individually. And so it, it varies by level, but usually there's structures within the classroom and outside the classroom to give kids extra support. It's really helpful to know that we're gonna have a designated reading specialist coming on board. And I know we'll talk more about that with the budget presentation, but I think that will help to organize some of those supports in a more thoughtful way.
Thank you, because I think it's really important that we talk about what we do when we identify, because we do a lot. And sometimes we talk more about the issue versus how we, because there's so much to be done. And I'm, I'm glad you mentioned the reading specialist at the middle school level, because during our workshops, we've had a lot of conversations about reading and literacy and our concerns about that. So again, as we go through, we're not done with the budget. And as we move through and some of this information comes out, I think we have to think about, do we stay where we are with the budget for that, or is there more funding needed that way? So I think, thank you, this is very timely to help us with that.
I'm feeling very excited about what's in the budget right now. We know that as kids move up, they become, you know, more, it's more important that they're skillful consumers of information and that they're able to digest information and use it to further their learning. So I, I think having additional resources at the middle level in the form of a reading specialist is a real help in the right direction.
Excellent, thank you.
Just a brief comment, given anxiety around testing and reliance on testing, which certainly I understand. I appreciate how this assessment is de-emphasizing to some extent reliance on MCAS. Obviously, the more data sets you have, the less reliant you have to become on analyzing one particular data point. So I just appreciate that this is giving us more of a window, especially with the different times during the year, to, to be able to take a look at student progress. And to me, it is, on the one hand, it is more testing, but on the other hand, it is making us less reliant on any individual assessment.
Thank you.
About how long are these assessments? And are they given during the, the regular school day? You know, like, just, could you just kind of explain how they're?
Regular school day, every, everybody takes them within whatever subject. So they take them in math, if it's a math assessment. There's a, a window of, of screening time, so it's usually a week, so teachers can think about where the best place in that week to follow. But we definitely want the information in. We learned that lesson the hard way the first year, where we had wonky numbers, because some kids were tested outside the screening window, and so therefore getting their data back was kind of hard. But it takes about ten to fifteen minutes. The interim assessments take even less time than that. And I think people are finding that they're more valuable for students that we're looking to track their progress, because they give us quick information about how effective the intervention is, for lack of a better word.
And then the teachers just input this into the software themselves, or is it, is it like a, a bubble test that's like?
It is possible. We're, we're looking at how we input the data within the software. I showed you the projection of that spreadsheet where I read the student experience across. Teams right now are most comfortable, they want to look at STAR in relation to other data. So right now, they're managing a lot of that with data, Google Sheets. And our new data specialist, Jeff Thayer, should get a lot of credit for thinking about how to build formulas into those sheets so that it automatically pulls the data from STAR into them, rather than us, you know, re-typing in all of the information we have. So I give him a lot of credit for making that process simpler. But we're looking now at, now that we can see trend lines, how to do that more efficiently in the platform.
Just so I'm understanding the question, in terms of the actual assessment you're asking about, because it's not a paper and pencil assessment.
Um, the interim assessment.
Interims are, but, but the regular one is a computer-based, so that is automatically.
Sorry, misunderstood what you were asking.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's, I mean, I'm, I'm a, a big and strong proponent of having multiple snapshots shots in time with a consistent assessment, and we can track how, how young people are doing. Obviously, there are lots of concerns in the community, there's concerns from myself about how are, how are, how are our kids coming out, coming out of COVID and wanting high expectations, and knowing that we also still have a lot of work to do to get, to get a lot of kids over some potential learning loss. I think over time, one of the things that I'd love to be able to see in this, well, as we have more of these, some of your report has comparing sort of one year to the next year at grade level. And as I think about this, it's, there's, there's value in both of the things I'm gonna say. So I want to see it lots of different ways, right? Comparing, you know, this year's first graders to last year's first graders and how they did. That might tell us, and one important metric. Comparing this year's first graders to next year's second graders. How's that cohort doing as they move along through the system? And the more we do this, and as I, as I track some of it, some of it still, it brings me pause and says, hmm, I don't know, it's early. And so as we think about, as I, as I'm sure you, and it's, I'm very happy that you have another person on the, on the team to help with some of the analytics, how do we pull out what's most useful? And that can kind of help us understand then, then how to, how to find that to be actionable. And I would, without a doubt, agree with Ms. Francis's comments that it's, we do these not because, not just because they're important, because we then need to have the tools and strategies to apply after that these are opportunities for, for teachers to learn how are their students doing. And so, you know, that, the next step in many ways is, okay, now what? Now, now we, now we've identified kids, and how do we, how do we then build, continue to build your snowman? And to stick with the, to stick with the analogy. And, and what tools do we have, and what tools do we need? And, you know, certainly, somebody who lives in the community who's got lots of friends who are, who are educators, sometimes they feel like there's too many tools, right? And do we have, now we've filled their toolbox so much, they don't know which is the most important one. So I know there's a lot of work that you and your team are doing, particularly at that literacy place. So I want to just thank you very much for all of the time and attention to this. Doctor, is there anything you'd like to say to wrap us up for, on this topic this evening?
I know that Ms. Claus is gonna be joined by her colleagues to talk about the budget specifically now. But, you know, just that, I, I appreciate the ongoing work and, and, you know, using tools that make that frequent assessment and being able to use data in ways that can, you know, really inform the work. And, and it's, it's really data-informed education. It's, you can't be prescriptive until you're diagnostic first. So I think diagnosing where kids are, that's particularly important right now as we are in the aftermath of, of the pandemic. So appreciate the report and look forward to future understanding of where the data is going.
Great. I'm gonna move to our, our next agenda item, and that is our FY twenty-four Curriculum and Technology Budget Report. We did receive. You got, you, you have friends now. The enclosed report that we did receive provides an overview of the fiscal year twenty-three curriculum, information technology and instructional technology budgets, and has proposals for the budgets for twenty twenty-four. So reviews twenty-three and then proposes for twenty-four. And as, as has been joined, we have Mr. Brian LaRue, our Director of Information Technology, and Ms. Shawna Powers, the Director of Instructional Technology Media Services. Thanks for being with us this evening.
We're excited to get back into a regular rhythm, updating you on what we've been doing. I think it's helpful to kind of just set the kind of context for thinking about what are the things that drive the budget. And budgets are by and large pretty predictable. There are things we know we need year over year. And then there are other investments like literacy that we can anticipate and plan for. I said to Liz De Disco, my administrative assistant, when she was hired, the good news is there's generally no crisis in curriculum. We have time to, to, to plan, and that's a good thing. It shows up kind of in our budgeting. And purchasing new materials is really a matter of staying in compliance. So one of the things that's also kind of happened sometimes is we have external demands as we look at responding, for example, to English learners or students with disabilities and wanting to make sure that our work is aligned with best practice. In terms of thinking about curriculum instruction and assessment particularly, we, we talk about our motto being empowering learners. And we want to make sure that we're thinking about this budget as fueling student learning, but this budget also really importantly fuels staff learning. This graphic was a representation of the PD cycle, the professional development cycle that educators in Truce Bay are in now year two of. We want to make sure that we mention how much resources for staff come out of the, my budget specifically, but also Brian's, where, you know, we launched a three-year cycle where students, staff would get some experience with universal design for learning. That's aligned for how do we have environments where all students can be successful. Diversity, belonging, inclusion and equity. So people have a sense about how we create more equitable environments, what it means to be an equitable educator, and then department-specific PD. So you heard Mr. Almeida's report on world language and their adoption of new standards that focus on oral proficiency. Next year, all of the educators at the K-six level, well, their cycle will be focused on literacy. And it just provides an opportunity for, for people to get collaborative time with their colleagues, but also to grow their practice on our early release days. So it's always helpful to kind of think about the investment that goes into that and also acknowledge and thank the community for the gift of time that enables teachers to grow their practice. I also want to mention that we're really grateful to have received a grant from the Mass Tier Literacy Project. So when we think about literacy, some of the cost for PD that we would have otherwise had to assume will be covered in the next two years, because that's a three-year partnership. And that's a really helpful piece when we think about literacy specifically. So this is a good example, I think, for us to talk a little bit about when we mentioned shifting our practice to focus on all of the arios of Scarborough's rope that I mentioned in the previous presentation. So we formed a literacy council to kind of look at what's the research on best practice in literacy. We'll be doing curriculum selection in the next couple of meetings. And then we'll be field testing those units and thinking about how to expand that practice to folks outside the literacy council when we adopt new materials. And ongoing professional development will be part of all of those different phases. And again, supported by not just tools like new, new hands-on materials, but also thinking about how we support ongoing learning. In terms of funding literacy specifically, I just want to acknowledge my colleague Patrick Collins for thinking about how to leverage state, federal grants to think about. Collins for thinking about how to leverage state, federal grants to think about taking the cost of the universal screener out of my appropriated budget and putting it onto SRT2, which then frees that same amount for literacy. And together with the amount from SRT2 for literacy, we will have $266,972, plus that investment of PD time through the grant, which is why I'm feeling really good about that. This is kind of an illustration of our budget over time. You can see that when we were experiencing budget cuts, the curriculum instruction team was experiencing that same constraint. Last year, we were really grateful to have it restored to kind of pre-cut levels. We have a modest increase for next year. And so together with what we've been able to make possible for literacy, we have the appropriated budget that we can also draw on for materials. This just gives you a sense of kind of how the pie in the curriculum budget is apportioned. So you can see it has roughly nine slices or spending categories. The biggest ones by far are educational supplies and instructional equipment, and those drive most of the expenses in the budget. We're always thinking about first supporting what's happening in the classroom, either the adult in the classroom with professional learning, or the materials and experiences students are having. We think about materials, and we automatically think about kind of paper and pencil and concrete tools that kids are using for math, for example. But increasingly, I've included these icons on the side. When we're talking about tools, we're also thinking about things that support kids' growth in math, like ST Math or Desmos at the middle level, or Alex, Minecraft, which is used at Sherwood to kind of help kids understand social studies concepts. And Shawna is going to talk more about Sora, which has been a really great new tool. And those things are all packed into that one item that we call educational supplies and equipment. It's kind of an archaic term. But each of these different colors on the pie chart has a whole spreadsheet of things in my more detailed budget. And I just wanted to say that as we look to honor kind of diversity and thinking about how we grow teachers, it's really helpful to kind of think about that aligned with what's new in education. And often, when we're thinking about what's new, these people are really helpful for me in thinking about what are emerging trends, either coming through teacher requests for new apps, or new tools, or thinking about how to leverage new technologies and techniques to make kids successful. So I want to turn it over to Brian, because our budgets for curriculum and instructional technology have become really linked.
Thank you. So just to give a quick overview of what the Information Technology Department deals with and what's contained in our budget, one of the bigger proponents is hardware, you know, iPads, teacher staff laptops, staff iPads, that kind of thing. Software, which may range from Schoology and CSOW to systems that are kind of maintained behind the scenes to manage our systems, to data systems like Power School and that kind of thing. So that's included in some of those pieces, kind of straddle the line between software and data processing. So those are kind of related in a lot of cases. Internet access through Selco, our servers, which kind of keep things running behind the scenes. And obviously, switches and Wi-Fi access points, which get the bits into the classroom and out to the internet. And audiovisual equipment, which is very important, obviously, to staff members, you know, in the past, you know, in the more distant past, projectors weren't really as important, but they're really critical day-to-day now for what teachers do in the classroom. And then repairing maintenance, keeping it all running when things go sideways. So if we go to our next slide, just to give you a quick overview of some of the things that we've done recently. Last year, we talked a little bit about the upcoming project to install short throw projectors at Lincoln Middle School, Middle School and Shrewsbury High School. In the past, they had projector carts in kind of the middle of the classroom, which took up valuable classroom space, and kind of restricted how teachers could arrange their classrooms. So we've moved to short throw projectors, which are those projectors that are mounted on the wall, that are more reliable. It's a more standardized setup for the classrooms, and it also facilitates, especially at the high school, teachers moving between classrooms. They have a more standard setup. They know what to expect when they get into the room. One thing that we've worked on in conjunction with Mr. Collins and the business office is the introduction of one-card badges. And what I mean by that is, it's a standardized badge that every staff member gets, that in addition to providing identification, it also provides building access to, you know, so that all staff members have access to the building to prevent things like prop doors and that kind of thing. And also, it allows for staff members to use the copy machines. And the way that works is they can print their jobs to a standard copy queue, and they don't have to say where they're going to print it. They just print to the copiers. And then they can swipe in at any of the copiers in the district, and they can pick the jobs, and the job will print at the copier. That has a couple of benefits. One, for confidentiality of information. That way, when, you know, somebody prints off a job that's more sensitive, it doesn't show up when somebody else is at the copier, and you're walking over to it. The other thing is that, you know, people get busy during the day, and they may send something to the copier or the printer, and forget to go pick it up, and that kind of thing. So that leads to wastage and, you know, full recycling bins and that kind of thing. So this way, things don't print till you're there in front of it, and you're picking it up. So that's resulted so far. We've had this in operation for about a few weeks now, and it's resulted in saving at least one tree, 11,000 sheets of paper, and over 300 pounds of CO2 emissions. So we're getting some progress there. We've also worked with principals to install 72 new visual surveillance cameras, and we've also worked to install a new ticketing system, which helps us in the IT department manage our workload. One of the benefits of this new system is it helps us flag tickets that may be kind of sitting a little bit longer in the system, make sure that it'll prompt us to say, hey, you know, this is overdue, you know, check in. Or, on the other side, if we're waiting for information from somebody who's requested help, it'll kind of prompt them, hey, you know, we're waiting for information from you, do you need help? That kind of thing. So it kind of keeps our system more fresh, and allows us to make sure we're staying on top of turnaround times for requests. And this year, the budget, mostly status quo, some higher costs at individual item levels for just increases in renewals that we're getting. One of the bigger items that we're adding to the budget this year is Zoom. And the reason that's moving to the budget is in the past, that was covered by grants, but now that'll be in the appropriate budget. So we'll turn it over to...
I think we should talk about the people part of things.
Thank you.
So the personnel piece is in the budget book, but not necessarily in that pie graph when we talk about this presentation. So I think toggling between the budget book and this is, requires a little bit of understanding. But I want to make sure I acknowledge our curriculum and instruction staff, and you'll see in red kind of my excitement about the addition of a reading specialist at the middle level. So overall, there are 23 people in the CIA, who I like to call them, that kind of fuel teaching and learning for students and for staff. And Shawna, who's the Director of Instructional Technology and Media Services, is certainly a really valued member of that group, because she thinks across levels about how we adjust, what we mean by equipment and technology for students, and how we can, having expanded the one-to-one project, leverage that tool to the very best of our abilities. So Shawna's going to talk a little bit more about her work this past summer, and some of the tools that we're using.
So as you know very well, we quickly deployed iPads at the K-4 level. And so, since we needed to do that in an emergent fashion, we weren't able to roll it out in a careful, strategic way that we would have done if we had had the opportunity to do that. So this past summer, I met with a group of staff members who were interested in helping us to move forward with some digital citizenship work at the elementary level. The first thing that we did was develop expectations for iPad use at the elementary level, so we'd have a consistent set of expectations there, similar to what we have at other levels. In particular, at Sherwood, which is obviously the closest grade level to K4, you know, the students have as their lock screen their iPad expectations. So we followed that model, came up with some simple expectations, and asked Brian and his team to set that as the lock screen on the student iPads. Additionally, we created posters to hang in all the learning spaces at the elementary level with the same information. At the start of the school year, all the members of the committee, they presented at their various buildings about our work. And we created a slide deck for teachers to use with their students to share these expectations with the students at the start of the year. In addition, we created resources to share out with families. We created a family iPad expectations flyer that was sent home through CSOW at the start of the school year. Additionally, we created a framework for the scope and sequence of the digital citizenship lessons, and decided to keep the digital citizenship lessons, for the most part right now, in the media curriculum where they had previously been. We had originally thought about maybe shifting some of the lessons into the general classrooms, but we know that classroom teachers are so strapped for time as it is, we didn't want to add an additional expectation for them. So we opted to keep those lessons in the media classes, and work toward making sure that teachers and families know what is being taught, so that they can reinforce those concepts in the classroom and at home. Excellent. So this is a document that just shows the digital citizenship lessons that are being taught by grade level. So if we take a look, for example, at the second grade, in second grade and media classes, there are five specific digital citizenship lessons. One is an overview of online safety issues. One is about understanding what types of information should not be shared with others online. One has to do with balancing time off-screen with time on-screen. One introduces the concept of digital footprint. And one introduces the concept of avoiding plagiarism. So those are the lessons that are being taught. We shared that resource also with the families when we sent out the family expectations flyer, so that they would have a better sense of, you know, what we were teaching in school, so that, again, they can try to reinforce those concepts at home. So just a little bit more specifically, in terms of how we're working to support families and managing technology use at home. Many of us know how challenging it can be to help our own children manage their technology use. And so, the teachers on the committee had talked about really wanting to really give parents some clear and specific guidelines for what we were hoping the iPads would be used for at home. So we shared those resources with them. So some of the tips are to really emphasize the idea that this particular device is a learning tool. So it's really been something that we've consistently worked to emphasize across the district as we have implemented our one-to-one programs. As we know, many families use devices for other reasons outside of educational purposes, which is completely fine, but trying to kind of differentiate that from the use of this school-provided iPad to the best of our ability. And one thing that we've heard from parents and families in the past is that they'll sometimes meet with pushback from their children when they try to redirect the children away from an iPad, or say, you know, that's enough time on your iPad, we're going to put that away now. So really reminding and emphasizing that really, the caretaker is in charge of the iPad, because I think sometimes kids might go home and say, well, no, my, you know, my school gave this to me, it's mine, you can't touch it, type of line of thinking. So just really making sure that parents and families understand that we mean for them to be in control of that. And importantly, you know, if a child is struggling with managing their iPad use, that families really should be reaching out to teachers, so that we can help as much as we possibly can. So another thing that is really great about our one-to-one program is it enables students to be able to begin to develop online research skills at the elementary level, in a much more simplified form than when we had carts of iPads. So we have some really great resources for research, and these are all accessible to our students from their school's media center webpage. We have three great databases, and some really great websites that are geared toward students at this level, and enable them to use various tools, like sometimes the text will highlight as it reads to you, and things along those lines, to make the research process accessible to even beginning readers. I know that we've talked about Sora before, but we love it so much that we wanted to mention it again. So Sora is the app that our students can use to access eBooks and audiobooks. And our statistics with Sora are really high. In the past 12 months, we've had almost 200,000 books checked out through Sora. And one thing that really made me happy was that the summertime reading statistics are really quite high. In July, we had almost 6,000 books checked out, and in August, 7,400. So one thing that I think about in terms of that is the equity piece, because students might not be able to make it to the library, or they might not have access to bookstores. But this enables them to access books at any time that they would like, and they can choose eBooks, they can choose audiobooks, and there are features that they can select to make it as accessible as possible for them.
So some of the challenges that we face across departments are thinking about those predictable expenses that we're carrying forward, and then money for new expenses. So we're really happy to have the budget restored, but mindful that it was just a slight increase. And so, we always have to make tough choices about what the benefits are for students when we're thinking about new tools. And that's particularly clear to us in the area of digital subscriptions. Brian and I started putting together a spreadsheet of all of the subscriptions and apps that are at use across the district, and thinking about, some of those are older tools, some of those are faded out. How do we kind of keep current? It's something that touches both of our, all of our roles, really, but hasn't been a need until very recently, in terms of the scope of what the requests are. We're really proud of what our educators have accomplished, and I hope when we've talked about kind of what we're doing, you can hear that. And I think thinking about how we differentiate supports for staff and use technology to do that is something that's top of mind for us. And then, just really thinking about some of the tools that teachers get excited about, because they're free, then the trend has become that they're no longer free. And so teachers invested in growing their practice with a tool that was easy to say yes to initially, and is now really tricky. And thinking about how we manage that is something that's top of mind. And, you know, just keeping up with all the tools that they're finding means that we also have to kind of keep on our toes, because there's a lot more of them than there are of us. And that's a good thing, but they give us some challenges that way. So time is there, as I think a challenge for almost anybody in any role. But finding time specifically to be strategic, in addition to the ticket system, and installing new software systems, and thinking about the lessons that are already underway. I'm really mindful of, that great work that you did over the summer couldn't happen during the year, because Shawna's teaching and also maintaining the library system. So thinking about how to do long-term projects like that is something that's really a challenge. And again, when we have hard decisions to make, we go back to our strategic priorities. We know we're anticipating the next strategic plan, and we'll have new priorities, and some continuing priorities, I'm sure. And so, thinking about those as a guide for when we have tough decisions to make, where we invest our time and energy is really important. And we appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about how we support students and teachers, and how we hope to build capacity going forward.
Awesome. Okay, it took me a minute there. What is, okay, sorry. Yes, it's a long evening. Thank you very much for the presentation. As always, there's a lot here, and you're combining lots of different sort of things into one, which while it makes sense, there's a lot of different pieces from the technology, and of course, curriculum and whatnot. Questions, colleagues? Please, Ms. Fritz.
I'm glad to also see that budget, you know, from that chart, and that we're going up. Technology touches everyone in this district, students, parents, families. It's the wave of the future. We need to be up to date. Thank goodness, we had iPads where we did when COVID hit, because we were able to move. But you're very modest. I mean, there was a lot of work that had to be done to get that out. And, I mean, so the IT department helping us, I mean, we had to change everything like that. So thank you for all of that work, and it continues. And when I look at like the cost for the Zoom... And when I look at like the cost for the Zoom, that's just the, it's the new thing. That's it. And when you look at the cost of it over the amount of staff and students, it's minimal. It's not, it's a drop in the bucket. Sora enables that equity piece through, you know, we couldn't do that before without this technology. So that's helping in a lot of areas that we have strategic priorities. So we do have an increased budget, but I always wonder, is there something else we could be doing or is there something you're concerned about when you look at the budget? Maybe not this year, but maybe next year. Is there anything that you're thinking of?
Yeah, one thing that came up recently is we received some information about the availability of bulbs for our older projectors that we have in the district. So we may have to start accelerating planning for replacing some of those. You know, when you think bulb, you may think of a short-term thing. Projector bulbs last for a number of years, so it's not a burden, but it's something that we'll have to kind of speed up a little bit.
Plan for in the future. Great. Thank you.
For me, one thing that I think a lot about is that iPads and computers are not the same thing. That it's great that we're able to provide students with access to iPads, but they also need to learn how to use computers. And some students have access to computers at home and use computers at home and maybe do, you know, after-school programs or summer camps, but many students don't. And so it concerns me that, you know, our students can graduate from high school having never necessarily used a computer at school.
I didn't think of that, that's a good point.
I was going to say, when we think about connecting to career pathways and we think about growing STEM experiences for students, that's another area that this team was really instrumental in thinking about how to do that. And at the same time, some of the space issues we heard earlier from the high school have meant that some of those spaces have been kind of cannibalized or repurposed for other really pressing priorities, right? Nobody's trying to phase out the computer labs. And Brian has been really great about thinking about how to put together carts. But how we find room for that in the program of studies and how we find kind of common experiences for kids that get to the equity piece is an ongoing challenge.
Thank you. Sorry.
First off, great report. Appreciate all the information you provided. I think it's just another reminder about how dependent we are on technology, both hardware and software. And I'm curious, Brian, from your perspective on like the software, the applications that we use, Schoology being one of them, do support tickets for that go through your team or do we have like a support team through Schoology that we can leverage on that or how does that work?
For most of our systems, we provide first-level support in-house. That way, teachers don't have to worry about who to contact and that kind of thing. And we can also kind of translate requests a little bit from our language or instructional language to maybe the language of the way Schoology may address something. So for the most part, we'll kind of handle the front end and then we'll, if we need to reach out to, you know, Schoology or CSO, then we'll reach out to their support on the backend.
And then you mentioned too, the new ticketing system, I think it's under, was it Fresh Service from what I read?
Exactly.
Which is great. I assume that's most helpful to the workload management. Prior to implementing that, how were tickets managed? Was it just emails or?
We had a, we've moved ticketing systems a couple of times. We've kind of outgrown the systems as we've gone to them. Our previous system was called RT, Request Track. It was an open-source system that we kind of, it was no cost and we kind of managed in-house, but it kind of started to lack some of the reporting and time manager features that we needed. And one of the things I didn't mention is that the new system will also allow us to set up a knowledge base that a staff can search and that also IT staff can use to kind of help users as requests come in as well.
That's great. And I also want to acknowledge the important work that Shawna mentioned about K through four, digital citizenship. The first time I heard that term was when my son went into fifth grade. And I think it's important to note that prior to March of 2020, I think we were two to one iPad in K through four.
Not K through four, actually. It was only, we started that in fourth grade and then we rolled it down to third, but it never made its way lower than third. There were carts in buildings that teachers could borrow to use with their classes, but not like a class set or a half-class set.
Yeah, I just think it's so critical to implement, you know, all that work that you did to teachers, to caretakers about the responsibilities of what is a learning tool, as you mentioned. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything? No, I think as just a foundational principle for me, when I tie back to your prior presentation about where are we making investments, fundamentally, I look at this budget item and particularly in the curriculum bucket. And it's a 4.2% growth. But there's a lot of things you're talking about wanting to do, and I know we're trying to be creative with some grant money and some other ways to do it, but I think, when I think about what's core and most important for us, many of it sits in this area. And so I think over the next few weeks, as we have to talk about what's most important and how do we prioritize, for those who are watching, there are a series of these from many different departments about their needs over the next many weeks. And so I think that's just a balancing act for us as a committee to say, is this the right balance and is it going to get us the outcomes that we're looking for? So that's in the back of my head, but we don't need to spend any more time on it this evening. Dr. Sawyer, do you have anything else you'd like to add here before?
I just want to thank this team, they do an outstanding job in, you know, from looking, from my view, you know, starting with Brian. I mean, we are, we have an incredibly reliable network. The fact that, you know, this use of technology day-to-day in the classroom is pivotal, and so if things aren't working, that's a big problem for us. You know, it's very rare that that happens in Shrewsbury. And when it does, it's usually some outside actor's situation. And there's a lot of things behind the scenes, but just in terms of being thoughtful about planning ahead, even this lightbulb thing, I mean, you know, we're thinking, you know, projectors, Ryan is thinking, you know, not just one or two moves ahead, it's three or four or five moves ahead. And that serves us well in terms of planning. Really appreciate all the work that Ms. Powers is doing across the district from the digital citizenship piece, figuring out ways to leverage some of these pieces. It doesn't happen by accident that we're one of the biggest consumers of Sora in the state. That is very purposeful, that, you know, our educators are doing that, but that starts with the ITAM's department and our media specialists and under Shawna's leadership. I think that, just as an aside, I was in a series of meetings at different schools, meeting with students as part of our strategic planning work. I happened to be at Floral Street School today, talking to a bunch of fourth graders and was asking them about some of the tools they use and Sora got big thumbs up, although they don't like how long they have to wait for books.
Oh, yeah.
And they also want more variety. So they're checking out hundreds of thousands of them, they want even more. So we'll see if that's a good.
We can always buy more.
That's a good problem to have. A problem to have, but they do appreciate it, and I was thrilled to hear that. And then as far as the connection around, you know, leveraging the funds to move forward, especially our professional learning, because any organization is only going to be as good as how well the staff are able to, in a professional sense, continue to evolve with their practice. And that can happen without strong professional development. So for all the things you heard, certainly I'm very supportive of it, and I appreciate the commentary. And we'll certainly be looking as we work through the strategic planning work the next few weeks. What is it that potentially, if there's opportunities to make additional investments, what might those be? So I appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And the next item on our agenda is under the matter of policy, and that is our school district calendar for 2023, 2024, our school year in vote. I do believe many people are in the audience for this item, and I appreciate we're behind schedule, apologies. I'm glad you're stuck here with us. We have, a draft school calendar was presented to the committee at our meeting on February 15th with a summary of the changes provided by Dr. Sawyer, and that was posted on the district website for public comment. In addition, Shrewsbury Educational Association and Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association officers were consulted. Dr. Sawyer did take that feedback into account and determined his recommendation from the calendar. For those, Dr. Sawyer, I'll let you share your recommendation. We did get a, received your memo from, in our book, and that proposed calendar was, again, included within all of our materials.
Thank you, Ms. Effron. And essentially, you know, what's in your packet is the original recommendation that I made. That is what I recommend that the committee do, just to very briefly summarize. There's been a, you know, two different calendar committees in the last couple of decades, most recently in 2016, where there has been a practice of having school in session on religious holidays. Those holidays fall at different times, different years, of course. Sometimes they're during weekday and a school day, other times they're on weekends. But it has not been the practice of this district for quite some time to recognize any of those in the sense of having no school days. It continues to be my recommendation to follow that approach that the parents and faculty and staff and school committee members who are part of that calendar committee came forward with. I spent a lot of time at the last meeting explaining the variety of, you know, legal elements that we have to follow relative to state holidays and in terms of emphasizing, again, that any student is permitted to miss school to observe their religious observations and may do so both under state law and school committee policy without any penalty and no adverse impact to their studies in terms of any grades. And we do try to make sure we're avoiding any significant assessments or projects due or things like that on various religious holidays when school is in session. So the calendar that I presented two weeks ago remains my recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but would ask that the school committee vote this evening so that we may put that into place and notify folks that they can begin planning for the next year.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions, or?
They're all from the committee members.
I just want to make some comments. I know we've had a lot of discussion around adding a religious holiday to the school calendar, and I want to thank everybody that reached out to us because it makes our decision-making better, it makes us understand more. And I also appreciate, we're a very diverse community, we have a lot of diverse needs, and there are a lot of different religions that have different holidays. So I fully appreciate that myself. But I also look at, we do have a school committee policy, this 291, that has been in our policy book for a long time, recognition of religious holidays, and that does lay out what we do as a district for our students. So students, staff can take a day off for a religious holiday, there's no penalty. However, I do think we need to do a better job of making sure the community understands what that policy is, that our staff fully understand it, that our coaches and our parents, that we all understand that we have a mechanism for anyone to take a day off to celebrate a religious holiday. When I look at the request that we had before us, I also want to make sure that we're being inclusive, and we have no religious holidays in our calendar now. We took those out 15, 16 years ago. So if we were to add one religious holiday in, I don't think that is inclusive. That's my personal opinion. I think if we were to add one, we would have to add all. That would be the most inclusive way to make sure that we're fitting all the diverse needs. So I, at this point, I agree with Dr. Sawyer. I think as we sit here today, we have a policy that students can use. We need to do a better job of explaining it. I definitely think that's something that we are lacking in. So I do support Dr. Sawyer's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Ms. Mouchet.
I'd also like to thank everyone that's contacted us and addressed us about making Diwali a school holiday. We really appreciate everyone taking the time to share their perspectives and concerns about this important issue. We've read everyone's correspondence on this issue. I also, I would like to echo Ms. Fritz's comments. I agree with Dr. Sawyer's recommendation to continue having school on religious holidays relating to different faiths. Based on the feedback we have received, though, I do think it's very important that we endeavor to make sure that the messaging is clear that students should take off religious holidays to be with their families and without having any, to worry about missing anything at school or, you know, any kind of consequence. So I do agree that we just need to make sure that the messaging around that's clear.
Right. Any other comments, colleagues? I think from where I sit, this one has been hard for me, and I've used every opportunity when I have people in my house, say, "What do you think about this?" Right? What do we do? Because it is difficult. And I have landed in the place that I do think it's the right thing to continue our policy of holding school on religious holidays. I absolutely agree that as a district, we, the district and we in our supervisory role as a school committee, have an important job to make sure that people, that's students, parents, and staff, we have a very diverse staff, and we're trying to make it more diverse, and so this will continue to grow, that they know that they have the right and expectation is that we should be supporting our children and our staff if they want to take the day to honor their, whatever their holiday may be. I think there's work to do there, and whether that is Dr. Sawyer and oddboarding of our new staff, professional development at the beginning of the school year, messaging from our building principals, so parents should hear from it, and all the typical channels you would hear from the educators in any building. I also want to just note, I think that's true for all religions. And so I have been on the receipt of requests to, while not as many in number, most definitely, but there are members of our community who are celebrating various Muslim holidays, who also have made requests and have very passionate student letters about those days too, right? And so I can appreciate that the issue is really complex. I also feel very strongly that as a district, were we to get to a place where we see so many absences from students and from staff, where they're celebrating a holiday, that we cannot meaningfully hold school, that's the point in time when we have to reevaluate, right? Then we're clearly causing a problem. But the prerequisite of that is that people feel that they can take the day and are being honored in doing so and are not receiving any negative pushback. And so I hope that the people who have reached out to us and the many who have, keep us informed if that's not the case, and that's not happening. And your child or if your staff member feel like, "We're having a problem, we're trying to take the day and, you know, I'm getting the side-eye about it. And yes, the homework wasn't due, but I didn't get enough time." That's important information for us to know. But if we get to the place where some other communities have for various holidays, that there are the preponderance of students that are out or staff that are out make it such that we can't do our job as a district, then I think that's the point in time that we have to reconsider this. So I certainly appreciate that's not the perspective for all members in this community. And again, you made some very passionate arguments on that front. In particular, as it is in this case, looking at Diwali, but again, as I see, given the impacts to others, at this point in time, I support the recommendation to continue with the calendar as, on this important issue, but many other issues about when professional development days and other such things that have not bubbled as much to the top, but that we not hold school on religious holidays. But again, like my colleagues have said, thank you to everybody who's both here this evening, came last time, sent us letters. I understand there's a petition that young people have been working on as well, and so, you know, we are engaging our community to get involved, and I appreciate that, even if the outcome is not as appreciated by everybody who's here this evening. With that, then, if there are no more comments, I would be looking for a motion on the proposed languages that the school committee vote to approve the proposed 2023, 2024 school year calendar as recommended by Dr. Sawyer in our materials. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. I'm going to move on to our next agenda item under Finance and Operations. We have fiscal year '24 fees and tuition, and this is for a report and discussion. Mr. Collins is here, and I believe supported by Ms. Isaacson, and the, we're here to present information on fees related to busing, athletics, music lessons, and preschool tuition as part of our budget process. It's important for us to look at all of these issues. I know Ms. Isaacson is here to present information and a recommendation on the extended school care program as well, and we did receive a lot of information in our materials on all of these. And the plan here is for a report this evening and for Dr. Sawyer to hear the feedback from the school committee on these many items and ultimately to make a recommendation for potential adjustments to any of these fees and a vote at our next meeting on the 15th. We do tend to vote on these things a little out of order of the budget before the budget is finalized, but largely because we have to notify families, we have to do a lot of planning, and it's important really to set these fees as part of the budget process. So with that, Mr. Collins, should I turn it over to you to get us started?
Sure, that'd be fine. And there are two different presentations. I'll run through mine first and then hand it over to Mrs. Isaacson to talk about the extended school care program. So you basically kind of ran through this calendar here, which is the plan forward and is typically part of the annual budget development process. And as you mentioned, it is important not only for finalizing the overall fiscal '24 appropriation request. 24 appropriation request on time, but also to begin the rollout of information to parents and changing all of our technology systems to ensure that we have the correct information for things like bus registration or extended school care registration, which typically happens right about this time of year and into the month of April. So there are two categories of fees that I'm going to talk about. The first is the, the types of fees and tuitions that provide partial funding for the services that they support. And that would be the bus fee, the athletic fee, and preschool tuition. So the fees that are paid by parents do not cover the entirety of the cost of those services. It's just a partial funding. And the appropriations budget that we're developing now funds the other portion and the majority of the services. The other type of fees are those that provide our so-called auxiliary services, the extended school care program and the music lesson program. Those fees cover the entirety of those services. And there's no impact, there's no monies budgeted in our operating budget to provide those services. So it's important to make sure that we're setting those fees appropriately so that they do maintain self-funding status and also have enough room, if you will, in those projections of revenues. Because if we were to fall short, then the only option would be to have is to have the operating budget pick up that cost, which could jeopardize the operating budget if those fees aren't set correctly. So in terms of budget assumptions for the operating budget, part of the assumptions that we're working off of in developing the budget is for the, the get-go or the beginning process. And Dr. Sawyer's initial recommendation to you was, the assumption was that all the fee levels for the busing, athletics, and preschool tuition would be at status quo as a start. And also that the fee amounts that would be recommended to you going forward for fiscal 24, for extended school care and music lessons, again, would continue with their self-funding status. So those are the assumptions. Getting down to kind of brass tacks here, talking about the busing fee first. This is not the entire history of the bus fee, but just the more recent history from fiscal 16, where the busing fee, annual busing fee was $250, then $275 for a couple of years, then 300 the year of the hybrid, if you will. The fee was waived in its entirety. And right now, the present day, the annual fee for busing is $320 per student. There's a $960 cap for families, meaning they pay for three and then any children thereafter, there's no charge. The total budgeted revenue for fiscal 24, assuming the $320 level, is $742,000 in receipts that would be generated from the parent fee. And all of those monies go towards offsetting the, the busing cost directly. This is a survey. I know that nobody at home can read this, but I know that the school committee has a larger view of this. This is a survey. This is a, you know, another lens that we look at in terms of our fee with respect to other peer groups, other school districts. This is 23 different school districts. Ms. April U., our transportation, our assistant finance and operations manager, who managed the transportation function, gathered this data for us. And we just kind of ranked highest to lowest in terms of the annual busing fee. And then off to the right, some of the particulars of how they implement that fee. And then on the left, where it says ABC, those communities belong to Asbit Valley Collaborative, which is an educational collaborative where I belong to, and so that's just another comparison group. So when you look at this roster, this survey of the 23 different communities, we ranked eighth highest on this list. We're the highest fee for all of the Asbit Valley communities. Shrewsbury, Manard, Grafton, Auburn, Hudson, Marlboro, Millbury. And I do want to make a note that there are a few regional school districts on this list, and regional school districts cannot charge a fee because they receive state reimbursement for transportation services. So that is information on the bus fee. The athletic fee, you can see, has kind of a similar setup, if you will, with respect to the history. This year, we're now at $325 per sport. And there's a $975 family cap, again, three times the, the fee. There is a, a lower fee for those students who are eligible for free or reduced lunch, and that's $50 a sport, $150 family cap. I should have mentioned with the busing fee, by law, if a student's eligible for free reduced lunch, the busing fee is waived by law. We cannot charge a fee to those students. So that is the athletic fee. And then, again, a survey of information that you can see more clearly with your, within your report. This is the MidWatch League. And we've got, just in terms of the range of districts here, Groton Dunstable is at the highest in terms of $400 per sport. They do have some variation within their, their sports, but that's kind of the, the primary is $400 per sport. You know, we've got a low on here of Fitchburg at $50 per season, but they waive 70% of that because of the socioeconomic status of their students. And then you can see, you know, the rank ordered here for the MidWatch League, Shrewsbury's third highest at $325. And I want to thank Mr. Costa for providing this information. Their Athletic Director Association gathers this information on an annual basis. The Oak Athletic Fee, more recently implemented. As you know, the, the, the school committee did away with the activity fees, but retained athletic fees. And the Oak Athletic Fee is one that's been in place since fiscal 21. And a $300 family cap, $15 per sport for students on free and reduced lunch. Estimated revenue on an annual basis, $25,000 for that. Preschool tuition, there's quite a variation in terms of the fee that we charge. This, this shows a three-day-a-week program in history. Right now, for three days a week for those families, it's $2,910 annually. And I've estimated fiscal 24, $425,000, $425,000 in total revenue. Based upon that fee level, we do have a so-called sliding scale for families that is, is used by the state. So we've adopted that to offer some discounts to family who are in economic need. And so we have a kind of a standard that we use there. And then this tuition survey, this is not rank ordered. It would be hard to do so because you've got two-day-a-week programs, three-day-a-week, four-day-a-week, five-day-a-week. So although Shrewsbury's at the top here, that doesn't necessarily mean we're the highest for all the programs. But you can just see where we are in comparison to other public school districts in our area for preschool. Moving on to music lessons, I'm shifting gears now to the program, again, that's completely self-reliant on the fees that are charged. The rates vary by the length of session. And Mr. O'Toole manages this program for us. It's highly enrolled, but also he has noted difficulty in retaining instructors. Most of these folks are independent contractors. And we have, as he reports, lost four instructors this past year because of our rate of pay, which is predicated upon the fee that we charge. And so this recommendation is primarily developed by Mr. O'Toole in order to retain the integrity of the program and stabilize our instructor base. And so this program runs on a semester basis. Typically, parents are signing up on a semester basis, and then they, their student gets 14 lessons per semester. He put together a, a survey, a little harder to get, there's fewer public school districts providing the program in the way that we do, which is in our schools, very convenient for parents. Many other school districts, you know, parents are kind of going out to the open marketplace and using private providers like Western Music Academy, Joy of Music, Apple Tree Arts in Grafton, or David French in, in Westboro. So you can see where our fees are for a 30, 45-minute or 60-minute session in comparison to others. There is a recommendation to increase our rates for next year. On the bottom, you can see where we are right now currently for those various sessions. And the recommendation is highlighted in yellow to increase those rates to maintain its self-funding status to $37 for a 30-minute session, and then up to 55, 50 for a 45-minute and $74 for an hour-long session. Of course, as you mentioned earlier, Ms. Heffernan, this is really just providing information to the school committee right now and then having gap time, as usual, for some feedback and then Dr. Sawyer's recommendation. And we could take a pause now if you wanted to ask questions on this part and then start with Ms. Isaacson or just roll right into that.
Or why don't we do that real quick? Yours, you kind of have a slightly different tenor. Are there any particular questions on this, on this part of the fees? Even, then, then we can continue.
Okay, so I've got to get out of here.
I do this. No, I do this. All right. Those lackmen's right.
Yep.
Excellent. And I want to do this. Great. Hi, thanks. So, you know, from a financial perspective, extended day really operates on kind of three principles of offering a high-quality program that's affordable to families, offering discounts to make our program more accessible to families with low income, but then also staying self-sufficient financially. And right now, I mean, that triangle's been balanced for a really long time, and these past few years, it, it's collapsed. So I think tonight, we're presenting some options of how to regulate that again and get back to where we need to be. The pandemic is certainly the biggest driving force on why we've fallen off track. We still are seeing a lot of parents working from home. Our enrollment is lower than it ever has been, but at the same time, we're seeing a higher need, families needing more financial support than ever, more families who don't have the luxury of working from home because they're working in a service industry job that then probably doesn't pay as much as people who have the luxury of working from home. So we're really in a cycle of supporting more students, both financially, but also socially, emotionally, behaviorally, which has staffing impacts on the program. You know, kind of can quickly see this trend of, three years ago, we had an FTE of 688 across all six buildings, and then that plummeted 25% when we reopened. And while, you know, we saw a little uptick this year, it's not at all what I predicted. I really thought, now that all our kids are vaccinated and we are unmasked and we're, have a lot more flexibility, I thought this year's enrollment would be much higher. And it's not. It's, you know, just an indication that a lot of people don't have the same childcare needs they did. But 563 is still a very robust program. Historically, our history of financial support, you can see just, you know, five years ago, we only had 31 students receiving financial report, support, and that was about 4% of our revenue. As opposed to this year, I have 112 students currently receiving some kind of financial aid, and that's almost 20% of our operating revenue. Where that asterisk is, we made a decision, our prior system of offering discounts was kind of haphazard. There were some people with vouchers. We had this 30%, you know, kind of all over the map sliding scale, and we went to a very specific, if you qualify for free lunch, you get an 80% discount. If you qualify for reduced lunch, you get a 60% discount. And that really made it a much more easy process to identify people who have needs, it made it much more easy for them to access, they weren't having to fill out complicated forms. But we also saw a rapid increase from that point on of people accessing the program. So this is just a comparison of what our full fees are versus what each discounted rate is. And if you broke that down to a cost per day, a full fee, family pays about $19 a day, and a family receiving free lunch receives, you know, less than $4 a day is the cost of childcare for the program. So when we look at some of these scenarios I'm going to show you for our budget, the assumptions are that enrollment's going to hold steady. I'm not going to make a prediction that enrollment's going up. It might, but let's not plan for it. I'm going to predict it's holding steady. We're planning for a staff wage increase that's in alignment with other similar positions in the district, so a 2.75% increase. A health insurance increase of about 7% we expect. I'm planning on keeping the discretionary spending level, not increasing that, really continuing to watch our costs. And then building in this cushion of, you know, 3% to 4% of our gross revenue. And part of that, the unpredictability of this business is if I lost one student per site, it doesn't decrease my staffing in any way, but that's $22,000 right there. So I have to have this little buffer where I no longer have a waitlist. I don't have a guarantee that if someone leaves, I can fill their spot. So these scenarios that I'll present, take that into account. For just the sake of comparison, if we made no changes, we did not increase tuition, and we did not change our reduced fee structure, we'd be impacting the operating budget by $184,000. That's, you know, that's not something that we can do. So the, I'm presenting three options tonight that I would like you to, you know, evaluate. The first of them is we do not change the reduced fee structure, and we raise tuition to cover those costs. This would result in a 20% tuition increase to families just to cover all of our expenses and have that little, you know, 3.6% cushion at the end. 20% is a really big hit. I, you know, very concerned about making our program unaffordable for families. But it's certainly an option. It, it keeps that discount level the same. Option B, changes the discount structure. So families with free lunch would change to a 60% discount from an 80. Families with reduced lunch would have a 40% discount. And I can say for, for reference sake, almost all of my families getting discount right now are free lunch families. There's maybe five who are reduced lunch, almost everyone's free lunch. In this scenario, we would increase tuition by 13% in order to cover all our expenses. And then option C is a 10% tuition increase, and that takes the discount to a 50% tuition break. So in, in talking about these with Mr. Collins and looking at them, we're, we're tonight, we're recommending option B, feeling like it's a, the, the best scenario of keeping the rates affordable, but also offering a generous discount to families in financial need. The cost for families, the monthly cost for families for each option is there, highlighted in yellow, is our recommendation. So our full rate would go to 377 from 344. And families receiving free lunch, you know, this more than doubles their tuition, and that's, you know, something that I don't take lightly at all. That's what it would amount to. To put it in a larger context, we do this every year. We take a rate survey. The rates for the other programs are their current school year. No one else has published their next year's rates yet. So I'm putting in a proposal for next year's rates, knowing that everyone else's rates go up too. Even at the, the highest scenario here, if we gave parents a 20% increase, we're still coming in significantly lower than the communities around us. And really, the, the only viable option for a group setting for Shrewsbury families is the YMCA in Westboro. Their base rate is $25 a day, but then they charge something like $15 a day for transportation. So it comes out to 720 a month, very high. Even without transportation, that's about 500 a month, quite, quite a bit higher than what we charge. what we charge. So, you know, trying to keep this, this brief tonight, we're, no, we, we know we cannot impact the operating budget. We have to increase tuition. I feel like reducing the amount of discount we give families, while that's a really difficult decision, is probably a necessary one. You know, I kind of breezed past the slide, but this year, this year's operating budget is forecasting almost $300,000 in a subsidy for families that isn't being covered in other ways. So I think this is going to be a necessary way to keep us from impacting the operating budget and being able to maintain a high-quality program for as many families as possible. Questions?
Thank you very much. Yes, please.
I have a question. You mentioned vouchers.
Yeah.
So do we have families that do use vouchers, or are those gone because we have the discount, or is it a combination? How does that all work?
We made the decision to drop the voucher program when we learned we could not offer an internal discount and accept vouchers, and we had very few families using vouchers, and the voucher waitlist is very long. So at that point, we said, we can serve more families by covering this internally. If we stuck with a voucher program, a lot of families would lose childcare. And I feel like we're at that point still. Like, we could renew that voucher contract, but the waitlist to get a voucher can be a year and a half to two years. So in essence, all of our families would lose their childcare next year.
Right.
Which does not feel comfortable at all. And I've talked to other school-run programs, you know, colleagues in the area. Some take vouchers, a lot of them don't for similar reasons. The administrative load is enormous, not just for programs, but for families. There's a lot of hoops to jump through to get one and maintain one. And other districts, some of them offer free childcare to people with free lunch, but they're also charging $500-plus dollars a month to their full-fee families, and that's how they're offsetting that.
So it's, so they're, the full fee subsidizes the discount, which is a good thing to do as a community. So that was my question. I didn't know if there was voucher plus, so that makes, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, sorry.
Just have, have you looked into maybe adjusting times based on the new start times and things of that nature, and have you factored that into?
Yeah, we, you know, our largest expense is staff, and it's more than 85% of our budget, and next year's salary projection is completely based on new hours, knowing that staff will be working fewer hours than they are this year, sometimes only by 15 minutes a day, but I kind of really dialed that down to, as close as I could predicting of how can I, am I lowering the costs of our personnel based on new school start times? And historically, we've just, you know, the middle school has more hours than the elementary school. We've always just charged a flat rate. You know, families might stay for an hour, and they might stay for three hours. The rate is the same. We haven't ever broken that down.
Well, thank you for all the thoughtfulness here. It's certainly, it is an uncomfortable position to try to figure out how, what is, clearly the program has to be sustainable. That's important. The fact that we have more families in the district who need financial support, and clearly this program, I'm sure, is helping them to be able to work and others, other things, and yet, even in the, in sort of the middle-of-the-road option, the fact that their, their costs are going to go up more than double is meaningful, so certainly worthy of some, some deep thought and consideration, and appreciate all the efforts and time you've put into, to figuring, sort of, is there, is there, is there a middle-of-the-road road option for us? And I look forward to hearing, hopefully hearing back from some families about what they, what they think. Do they, do they know that this is a presentation, so you have an opportunity to communicate with them and let them know that they can reach out to us, and it means it's not, I mean, they're all tuned in tonight?
Yeah, send them an email tomorrow, saying, you know, linking them to all of the presentation materials, and with the email addresses of how to contact you.
Perfect, thank you, thank you very much. I think this is an important one, and I certainly get nervous with such a drastic change for some vulnerable families, and at the same time, appreciate, we can't have it, we can't have the cost impact the operating budget and then not hire a teacher.
Right.
Right, like, so that's the, sort of what is fundamental here, but. Anything else you'd like to add, Dr. Sawyer?
I have, I hold Ms. Isaacson leadership in great esteem, and she's extremely thoughtful about the approach that she uses. It's an extremely high-quality program. The staff is outstanding. We're very pleased and proud to be able to offer it for so many years for such a relatively low cost compared to our peers in other communities. And as I know, some of you have, at least, was I, was a user of the program for many years for my own children, and it was really, made things work for our family. And know you had that, the confidence of a high-quality program connected to your school district with terrific people. There's so much value in that. We want to make sure we continue that, but I concur, it needs to be financially self-sufficient and try to do that in the most fair way possible.
We will be back in two weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lovely evening. The next item on our agenda is a, also under Finance and Operation, and that is a vote to accept a scholarship donation, and I'm, the Dr. Ken Su Memorial Trust, am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So we did receive some background materials in our, in our packet, but Dr. Ken Su Memorial Trust is being established by his children, Christina and Lloyd Su, in memory of their father, who died on February 5th of 2023. Dr. Su was a longtime resident of Shrewsbury and a renowned scholar in the field of mathematics and engineering, and a longtime supporter of the Shrewsbury Public School System. The Su family has made a contribution of $10,000 to establish this trust. Two annual scholarships of $1,000 each are to be awarded each year in Ken's memory to a graduating Shrewsbury High School senior who plans to attend college and study in the field of science, technology, engineering, or math. And we did receive a copy of that trust agreement, given that this is a offering above our, per our policy, the school committee needs to vote to accept such an arrangement, and I understand there's been some communication with the, with the family. Is there anything further, Mr. Collins, that you have, you have for us on this?
I'll just add two items that Dr. Su's children, Christina and Lloyd, contacted Dr. Lozot and myself shortly after his death to inquire about setting this up, and the trust agreement that you have in front of you is one that we've used for a large number of years now, and was crafted with the assistance of Mr. Chris Mena, who happens to work in this field. And so we took his lead on this format, and it's served us well, and that's all that I have to add.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Collins? Obviously, an awful lot of appreciation to the Su family.
Absolutely.
For this, and I, with that being said, unless you have anything, Dr. Sawyer, I'd be willing to take.
My gratitude.
Yes, of course. We're requesting a motion that the committee vote to accept the donation of $10,000 from the Su family to establish the Dr. Ken Su Memorial Trust per the terms of our enclosed trust agreement.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor can do so with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you very much, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
And we'll be sure to reach out to the Su family on behalf of the committee and thank them. Next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. The school committee did have both workshop on February 8th and of school committee meeting minutes on February 15th. Those were attached. Any edits, those can be marked as accepted, as submitted. We do need to go into executive session this evening briefly for the purposes of reviewing and acting on a student residency issue, and then we will adjourn directly from that and not, not reconvene this evening if I may have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of reviewing and acting on a student residency issue. So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote is required. Ms. Fritz, aye.
Mr. Wensky.
Aye.
Mr. Palich.
Aye.
Ms. Bache.
And myself, aye. Thank you, and good night.